Hi everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you okay Jose.
Okay, I'm just my computer's in the shop and I'm on a surface now and I just want to make sure that I was good to go. All right, thank you.
No problem, crystal clear.
A webmaster, can you go ahead and release my video? I want to make sure it's working as well, just for a moment.
Uh, no problem, let me get that going right now. So it looks like the meeting was set up with video disabled, let me go ahead and work on that right now.
Yeah, I do have an action item, so I may have to answer some questions.
Okay, all right, let me, let me see what I can do.
Hey Mitch, just a heads up that I'm gonna sign off in a few minutes and sign in to the the CSM night crew festivities, but I should be back for my action item in time.
Copy that.
Okay, so it looks like you should be able to, if you click the start video in the lower left-hand side, if you, if need be, I'll just make you a co-host, so you can have that ability as well.
Um, you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it. Whichever, again, I don't need it, I'm just want to make sure it's working, in case they have questions for me later tonight.
Yeah, my video is not working either.
Okay.
Mine either.
Aaron, your video working or not working?
Nope, not working. I blame Mitch personally, Mitch blaming you.
Oh, good.
Aw darn it, I was hoping we could not have.
I still can't start my video.
I'm good to go, okay.
Thank you very much, I'm good.
No problem, um.
Ah, my lighting's bad.
Okay, it looks like I've got everybody as a co-host, please let me know if you would like your video on and you'd like me to make you a co-host.
Yeah, we'll advise again, only if they have questions on my action item, thank you.
Mitch, it looks like we have a, or we had a hand raised. And they might be inquiring about whether they should be allowed to speak or not, do you want to keep that turned off for now?
It was Kate Brown, she just punched random buttons.
Okay.
I texted her.
Okay, let me know if you want me to allow that for anybody, but seems like, seems like the hand went down, so it should be fine.
And they shall have a public comment, so she'll raise it again.
Reminder, reminder to all, the meeting is live broadcast right now.
You're gonna post this one? Anyway, she will have a public comment, so when she raises it the next time, it won't be accident.
Okay, okay, sounds good, and just a little heads up, it looks like we have a bug with our closed captioning. We will be able to get the meeting captioned, but it will most likely occur after the fact. For now, that particular tool seems to be having some issues on the Zoom side. So it seems like it's something that just happened.
And apparently we're broadcasting now too?
That's correct.
Hey Maurice. Hey everyone.
Hi there. Good evening.
We're not broadcasting yet, do you all, we have our two new. We're not broadcasting yet, do you all, we have our two new.
We are, we are broadcasting live.
Oh, we are broadcasting, sorry, okay.
Am I not allowed to use video mic?
You should, you know.
Let me, yeah, let me see what I can do about that.
You guys don't want to see my great holiday sweater?
I do, I want to see it.
There we go.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Or all the Niners fans that.
Oh yeah, oh no.
All right, it's, okay, there we go, this video stopped, there we go.
Is that the St. Louis Cardinals, Jeremy? Whoops.
Heck no.
I think we're waiting for trustee Nouris.
Hey Mike, for anybody who's giving a public comment, could you give them an estimate as to when, when the public comment period might open?
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough one to call, it depends, let me look at the, let's see. I would say we're probably, this is just a guess, we're probably about 45 minutes to an hour, once we get started to public comment, but that's a guess, it could, somewhere in that timeframe.
Is there, is there any way you might allow a public comment or two after the pledge of allegiance, but before we move on to other business? I know there was, there was somebody who wanted to make a comment, and they have a commitment on the backside of their evening.
That'll, it's up, it's really up to all of you in terms of the order of the agenda, so we'd have to, we'd have to, I think, change the order of the agenda.
Uh, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, and you're showing as me now, Tom, so.
Okay, because I'm, mine is saying you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it. Whatever that means.
Okay, so can we?
I will go ahead and fix that for you now.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and try it now.
Okay, no, it's still saying that you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Okay, now, now it should work. It does appear we have two mic clears though.
Yeah, I'm under mic as well, so that's.
Okay, here I am.
Which mine, my name.
Yeah, I, there we go.
Okay, so do we have all the board here now, one, two, three, four, five, I think we are all here. Okay, so are we ready to go live at this point?
We're live.
Oh, we are. All right, then I would like to announce that in the absence of the board president, and as the vice president of the board, I'll be presiding at this part of the meeting through the board president election. So I'll call the meeting to order at this time, and Mr. Bailey, would you call the role, please?
Certainly, good evening, Vice President Nouris.
Here.
Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Uh, here.
Trustee Patrides.
Here.
Trustee Pimentel.
Here.
And student trustee Shanet. Mr. President, also in attendance are Chancellor Claire, Kenyatta College President Moore, Skyline College President Moreno, College of San Mateo interim President Lopez, and District Academic Senate President Wallace.
Thank you and welcome to all. The next item is the pledge of allegiance, and so can we have the flag, please? Please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, the announcements of reportable actions from closed session is that the confidential warrants were considered and passed. So the next item on our agenda is the discussion of the order of the agenda. First of all, staff has asked that item 20127C be removed, and it'll be brought back at another time at one of our business meetings. And are there any other requests for a change in the order of the agenda? Yes, trustee Oliver?
Yeah, I would like to move item 20125C, update on contract award process for San Mateo Athletic Club, RFP, higher up in the agenda. Because I believe there may be members of the public that want to speak on it, so if we can move that maybe up above the other recommendations, take it up after the consent agenda, I would appreciate that.
2012.
5C.
5C. Any objections from board members? I'm hearing none, then that will move.
And through the chair, I think this would be the appropriate time for trustee Pimentel to make his recommendation, I'm not sure if you have a place for moving public comments.
Oh, first of all, let's, let me just be sure I know where we moved 5C to.
Under 12, or 2012107B.
Yeah, right now, it is currently an information report, so it's in that section, I'd like to bring it up before we get to the item called other recommendations, so.
So 20123C, after that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so then that would be.
Right after the.
20125C. Okay, so that report then, it's the update on the contract, and that can be brought up then under, right following the consent agenda items.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, was there anything else at this point?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom, one, one thing, perhaps after the swearing in, a member of the public had reached out to me, and it looks like she has a comment in the chat. I'd like to propose that we get the public comment on immediately after my swearing in and Maurice's swearing in.
All right, that would be, then, let's find our spot here again. All right, so that would be then, before the organization of the board, is that what you're asking?
Yes, please, thank you.
Any objection from any members? All right. Then if that is acceptable to everyone, then that is what will be the new order of the agenda. So the next item on the agenda is the swearing in of a re-elected and newly elected trustees. I'm happy to announce that trustees Petre this has already taken her off oath of office earlier today. As she was sworn in by Lieutenant Governor Alenia Kunalakis. And so we have then the swearing in of trustee Goodman and trustee Pimentel. So at this time, are we prepared to move forward with trustee Goodman?
Yes.
All right then.
This is, uh, let's see, all right, this is Justice and Malcolm Goodman.
Hello, gentlemen, welcome to our meeting.
I'm Maurice Goodman, do solemnly swear.
I'm Maurice Goodman, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true, true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
Their true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take the obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And then I will well and faithfully discharge. Discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties for which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations trustee, and congratulations gentlemen, for your father's successful election, thank you for participating.
Thank you.
A wonderful touch, thank you so much trustee Goodman. Are we, are we not ready yet for trustee Pimentel, not yet?
We are.
Oh, all right.
State Senator Becker in the, online with us.
All right, then we'll bring him up.
Welcome, State Senator Becker.
I think he's muted down there, there we go.
Yeah. Yes, I can speak. It's not letting me share my video at the moment. It says, it says the host has stopped it, is it possible?
Go ahead and try it now?
Yes, oh, I think, okay, there we go.
There we go.
Welcome Senator to our board meeting, and thank you for being a part of our ceremony tonight. I will pass the floor to you for the swearing in of our new trustee.
Great, I will do that, I want to also send my congratulations to Lisa and Maurice. And my thanks to Dave Mandelker for his service, and to acknowledge Tom Moore tonight, I feel like his spirit is very much with us tonight while we do this, so Mr. Pimentel, are you ready?
You're muted.
Yes, sir, well, I need to be unmuted first, yes.
Okay, so, all right, raise your hand, excellent. I, state your name.
I, John Pimentel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear full truth and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations trustee.
Thank you, thank you very much Senator, appreciate it, you're gonna do a great job up in Sacramento representing the county, and thank you to the board.
Thank you, thank you both of you very much. And welcome.
Thank you, look forward to working with the board and leadership going forward.
We look forward to working with you as well, thank you so much. Okay, so the next item with the changes that we have made is to call a public comment. And it appears as if now we have public comment. Is there a hand up, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. President, we have, at this moment in time, we have three hands up, the first is Annie Corbett.
All right, first of all, I would like to invite everyone to participate in the public comment that is interested in doing so. The rules of our public comment basically is, is that we allow you up to three minutes, because we have a long meeting, and we want to respect everyone's time. So Annie Corbett, you are first, welcome.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you for having me, and congratulations to our newly affect, newly elected trustees. My name is Dr. Annie Corbett, and I am an adjunct faculty member here at Skyline and Kenyatta Colleges where I teach psychology. I'm here to talk about the great inequity that exists between full-time and part-time faculty. On April 12, 2000, the Board of Trustees passed a part-timer equity resolution where it states, quote, "Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the San Mateo Community College District supports equal pay for equal work for part-time faculty," end quote. On September 25, 2001, the Board of Governors for the California Community Colleges issued a policy statement regarding part-time parity, and how districts can obtain funding from the state to facilitate bridging the parity gap. Quote, "The Board of Governors supports the policy that part-time faculty should be paid comparably to full-time faculty for those in-class and out-of-class responsibilities that are the same," end quote. The policy directed community colleges to address part-time parity, and state stated even then that part-time faculty should be compensated for instructional time, grading, prep, and office hours as are all full-time faculty, and even offered SMCCD over $900,000 to bring parity to part-time faculty. SMCCD declined the funds to bridge the gap of parity, just a year and a half after making a board resolution to being committed to parity, which brings us to where we are today. I possess an MBA and a PhD. Because SMCCD part-time faculty are not compensated for education, I make the same as a faculty member with a master's. Full-time faculty are compensated for experience and education via 25-step tier system. I'm at the lowest parity range out of part-time faculty. I'm at 55% of a full-time faculty member compensation with the same education experience. Whereas the faculty with just a master's degree is at 64% parity. Let me put the parity issue another way, on how it affects me personally. SMCCD is the fourth lowest in compensation for part-time faculty out of the Bay 10, while also being the highest in the state for administrative compensation. I'm currently interviewing for another local district that has achieved parity, and if hired, I will make $3,000 more per class than at SMCCD. With three classes per semester, that's $18,000 more in additional compensation I would be making working there than at SMCCD, which is where I want to work. It's been almost two years of negotiating for a fair contract. I implore the Board of Trustees to please approve part-time parity, so we can get equal pay for equal work, thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chancellor Bailey?
Next we have Kate Brown.
All right, welcome Kate. Where is Kate, is she there?
This is for Catherine Brown?
Yes, Catherine Brown.
Yes.
Kate Brown, you are next up. Kate Brown, you are next up. The floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Oh, great. Hi, everyone. So I'm here today to thank an outgoing member of our community, Jerry Hill. And I wanted to read a brief email that he sent out to his constituents a week and a half ago because he's been such a support for our district. Dear friends, as I retire from the State Senate, I am tremendously grateful for the opportunity to represent you. Without any grand plan or design, I volunteered for my local homeowners association more than three decades ago. And before I knew it, I was elected to the San Mateo City Council, served as mayor, then the County Board of Supervisors, the State Assembly, and finally two terms as your state senator. I've been honored every step of the way to stand up for this proud community to fight for our health, safety, economic well-being, and the beautiful environment that surrounds us. Having your trust has been the greatest privilege of my career in public service. In that spirit, as we embark on a new chapter in our district, I invite you to join me in warmly welcoming Senator-elect Josh Becker, who we just heard from, to the Senate. Thank you for the privilege of serving you. Sincerely, Jerry Hill, State Senator of the 13th District. And I wanted to read that because I want to say that Jerry Hill has been a steadfast supporter of our district and Skyline College, as well as a very strong public servant and advocate. Special note, he was a guest lecturer for our early childhood advisory class, the advocacy class we had. He was a participant in one of our inclusion conferences that we have every spring on campus and he was also an honored speaker at our annual early childhood and child development family graduation dinner. So that's my statement and I just wanted to publicly comment on that on behalf of our Skyline and San Mateo Community College community.
Thank you for that. We all appreciate Senator Hill's strong support for the district over the many years of his service to our county and we wish him well as well and thank you for sharing all that and bringing it to the awareness of the board and to the community.
Yeah, and congratulations to our newly elected trustees. You're joining a great group.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you. Vice Chancellor Bailey.
Next we have Hamza Ajamarman.
All right.
Hi.
Hello, how are you? You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Hamza and I'm currently taking courses at the College of San Mateo. I wanted to follow up on my email to the board and summarize my experiences as a student. With multiple college degrees, professional designations, and an established career, I'm not your typical student. Earlier this year, when all the colleges and their courses went online due to the pandemic, I wanted to grab the opportunity to get some credits needed for a new license without spending a fortune. Those courses are typically in person and I rarely get to, you know, coordinate with my supervisory schedule. I had taken some classes at San Mateo County College, Community College 15 years ago and I enjoyed that experience and decided to go with it again. I'm a long-term resident of the San Mateo County and my property taxes fund the college district, so it was a natural first choice. I enrolled in March of 2020. It's mid-December. I'm still struggling to get access to my college email ID and a hotspot. I've been a student the entire time here. I'm guessing all communication from the college or professors is sent only to my inaccessible email ID. I probably sent in 50 requests this year without a resolution. Enrollment was not an easy process either. The fact that I'd studied decades ago was actually a roadblock. That was just one of my many frustrations that made me check out Foothill College. It was a breeze to enroll there as a full-time student. And I, but I still continue taking one course a quarter at San Mateo College, especially classes that weren't available at Foothill or if they wouldn't let me go or full-time over there. The differences between the two community colleges are day and night. This entire year at San Mateo County College, Community College, I didn't have a single need to talk to a fellow student or a professor. It's so easy to be completely siloed. At Foothill, we are incentivized when we collaborate and are encouraged to participate in multiple class discussions and team projects every week. There are contests, clubs, hackathons, networking opportunities, campus interviews, and various student resources that integrate a student with the community. I haven't had an opportunity to experience that community feel here. Not that I would need it, but a typical student would. And it's just so glaringly absent. Stimulus benefits reach the students there. Foothill College has been completely transparent about it. No attempt has been made to reach out to me here. Libraries, resources, homework support, teacher response time, all that I took for granted at Foothill are either non-existent or, I think, well-hidden from students like me at San Mateo College. Anyways, this is really my last attempt to find an option to access my email inbox. I've mostly given up at this point. Thank you for the time and this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you very much. As you know, this is not an opportunity the board is not, cannot comment as far as that goes because not an agenda item. However, administration and staff, are you aware of this? Chancellor Claire?
Yes, and I appreciate your comments and I'd actually like the opportunity to speak with you as well. But I will tell the board that I appreciate the work of President Moore and also our Chief Technology Officer, Dom and Gruall. And we've kind of tracked down a number of communications items. And what I'll do is I'll go ahead and send you a summary after our meeting tonight so you can see what, see what the, basically what the college efforts have been.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes basically the public comment at this point. I've noted in the chat that we do have this further down in the agenda and there may be people that will be joining us later on anticipating an opportunity to speak further on in the agenda. So when we reach that part, I will again ask to see if there are people that are interested in making a public comment. If that's acceptable to the board members. The next item then is the organization of the board. You'll recall that at the meeting of November 18th, 2020, it was announced that the annual organizational meeting would be held at this meeting on December 14th. And at this organizational meeting tonight, the board will elect officers for 2021, including a board president, a board vice president clerk, a board secretary, and a representative to the County Committee on School District Organizations. So at this time, I will call for nominations for the position of board president. Trustee Oliver.
I nominate Tom Nurse.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, then the nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hello, are we all in? Trustee Patrithis, you're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for the nomination and thank you for your, your appointment as your president this year. I will do my best to serve the district and you as my colleagues in a way which is appropriate for the chair and, and bring dignity to the office and for our district. So thank you so much for, for this honor. Allow me then to continue and call for nominations for the position of board vice president.
I nominate Richard Holliver, please.
All right. Trustee Holliver, you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Congratulations Vice President Holliver.
Well, thank you very much and I look forward to a great year.
Thank you. The next item is a nomination for the position of board secretary. And this is a position held by an individual who is not an elected member of the board. The position is traditionally held by the chancellor. So is there a nomination at this point?
Move the chancellor for that position.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any further nominations for the position of board secretary? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations Chancellor as Secretary of the Board again. Now we come to the nomination for the representative to the board of the board for the County Committee and School District Organizations. And trustee Mandelkern held this position in 2020. So I would like to have a nomination for this particular appointment. Is there a nomination or is there someone that would like to specifically serve? Perhaps that's the better way of putting it.
That, I mean, it's also, it's only a meeting that's probably held once a year, just to note.
So, are you volunteering?
No, I'm actually giving information to our trustees, our new trustees. So if they wanted to serve in this capacity, it would be a great opportunity, but it's just one meeting a year.
One meeting a year, that's it.
If that, last year they didn't even meet.
I'll be happy to do it if you don't want to, Lisa.
I was gonna ask a little bit about the, about what that meeting is like, but that's fine, John. Happy to.
All right, then perhaps trustee Patrithis, you can nominate trustee Pimentel.
I would like to nominate trustee Pimentel for the representative to the board, to the County Committee on School District Organization.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
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 Congratulations and thank you for accepting that position. So we are now through the organizational phase. Our next section is presentations to the board by persons or delegations. And so the first item, 2012-1C, is a presentation of fall semester activities by the students of Kenyatta, CSM, and Skyline. And I'd like to call upon our student trustee, Jeanette, who will introduce the reports and the representatives from each of the colleges. Good evening, Jeanette.
Good evening. So this item, the Associated Students of Kenyatta College, College of San Mateo, and Skyline College will be presenting to the board giving updates related to their student-led activities for the fall semester 2020. We're gonna start with Associated Students of Kenyatta College President Adrian Affif and Vice President Chili Montian.
Hi, everybody. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Hi, everybody. My name is Adrian Affif. I'm the president of the Associated Students of Kenyatta College and I'm joined here with Vice President Chili Montian. We have created a pre-recorded presentation for everybody today that highlights all the amazing work and collaboration that our team has done this semester and everything we're looking forward to next semester. So thank you for having us today and I hope you enjoy the video.
So much for having us today. I believe Michiko, our advisor, sent the presentation to Karina.
Victor, can you play the video, please?
Yes, beginning now. Mitch, can you confirm if you can see my screen?
Copy that.
Hello, my name is Chili Montian. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm the vice president of Associated Student of Kenyatta College and my major is animal science. It's so wonderful to virtually be here with y'all today.
My name is Adrian Affif. I use the humans' pronouns. I'm the student body president of the Associated Students of Kenyatta College. I'm also a film major. Chili and I are both so thrilled to be here and share with you all of the amazing work that our team has done this semester.
We would like to start our presentation by sharing our six Student Senate 2021 initiatives. Based off of our priorities of anti-racism and community connection during the pandemic, we feel very fortunate that we have been able to present these initiatives at the college all campus leadership retreat and have enjoyed working with college administrators, staff, faculties, and fellow students on the research and implementation of these goals.
Starting with our communication initiative. We understand that it can feel extremely confusing and isolating to be a student in this digital world and I've created monthly newsletters from Student Senate. We've worked with our marketing department and administration on the content and posted articles that included video links to past events, interviews with faculty, staff, administrators, and alumni, and how to get involved despite this pandemic. Our goal is to continue to develop and create newsletters to keep our college community informed, updated, and connected.
We understand how technology can be barrier to education and wanted to learn more on how to support our fellow students. Student Initiative Team worked with the Dean of Pre and Dean of Technology Initiative to create and advertise a campus-wide technology survey. Data just came in. Reviewing the data with deans and presenting this data at Flex Day in January, through collaboration with vending commissions and partnering with the library and Dreamers, we have been able to sponsor the purchasing and distribution of the new Wi-Fi hotspot.
We were so excited to hear from a presentation to Student Senate about the college's plans to start a multicultural center. We are passionate about this space for students to come together and be seen, celebrated, and supported in a new and different way. To better understand how various multicultural centers support students, we have formed a student committee researching multicultural centers across the state and are in the first stages of a draft on what support systems students would like to see within our new center. We look forward to doing more research and working with the college community in this coming semester and what this new center can look like.
We also understand that mental health is a major priority for all of us during the pandemic. We have curated posts working with our marketing and administrations and share student experiences throughout the transition to online, including what students are eating, how they are staying active, and what they are watching. We will continue to develop leaflets each month to share healthy habits with our campus community.
2020 has seen a new anti-racist revolution across the country and our team would like to work with the campus on their anti-racist efforts. Along with having two reps on the anti-racist task force, we've done training on Title V and Title IX with Director Sims, as well as our team's research on what other campuses are doing and what students across the nation are facing. We are researching the possibilities of starting a new campus inclusion team that could explore overall trends on microaggressions and potentially provide resources and specialized training to our campus communities. Once we've completed the research and exploratory stages, we look forward to working with the campus on additional ways that we can support college-wide anti-racist efforts.
Inspired by our work at Wednesday in spring 2019, we developed TuneUp Tuesday, a weekly virtual space designed to build connection among students during this global time of disconnection. We partner with Promise Scholar Program team to promote this to all students, including promise students who will have a promise peer mentor available to them anytime they come to an event. We intend to continue working with the Promise Scholar Program to host TuneUp Tuesday every week.
We feel very lucky that we've continued to host the same number of events as we have when in person.
We would like to highlight our House Cup Championship event on August 26th. Through this event, we were able to grow our relationship with faculties, staff, and administrators, not just through initiatives, yet with even as well. We had four teams with 20 faculties, staff, and administrators compete in campus knowledge-themed game that entertains students.
We would also like to highlight our Club Rush event. This was one of our biggest virtual events with the amount of participants above 70. We are both newly active and continuing clubs there to give a presentation about their clubs. Through this event, we were learning about the clubs and inter-club council rules, building connections with club leaders, fostering the ability of collaboration, and encouraging more involvement of college experience.
These are all of our second quarter events.
We would also like to highlight being able to volunteer together and adopt a lane at the district's community market. Being able to serve our community with district administration and college staff was really special.
A few of our professional development highlights, as far as that. A 10 national conference on student leadership and our team was chosen as one of the 10 national speakers sharing about social movements.
Commissioner Moreno also got to M.C., the college's Latino Thoughtmakers event.
Senator Canadian presented at October Flex Day discussing our campus work with campus inclusion team. We also got to be part of College First Safe Zone Virtual Training Video Series. Three members of our Student Life Team were able to be the closing speakers for the District First TEDx Event at CSM on how art- On how art can help engage during uncertain time.
And we held our annual campus movie fest and are still the only community college to host this. Three of our student films won jury awards and one of those student films won best story and best performance. Against colleges across the nation, our college is one of the most awarded colleges during the September event. Even with virtual modality, our senate has kept the yearly tradition of benchmarks in community, change, mentorship and leadership. We've really enjoyed our tradition of sharing our stories deeply with one another and feeling connected as a team. Despite not getting to be with each other face to face.
Thank you again for this opportunity, like our twenty twenty should say. Although we are miles apart, we are still close at heart.
We feel very fortunate to work so closely with our administration, faculty, staff and students this year. As we get through this together. Thank you.
Okay, and it appears that we have one additional video to share, which I will get ready now.
Trustee Jade, who will we be hearing from next?
Um, the video that I sent was for the associated students of Skyline College. None of their. Board members are here, so they sent me the link to their video, which they sent to our IT person. So that's the video that's gonna be shown next.
Thank you.
Hey, people. My name's Carlos Ungo. Today I'm gonna be your host. Host for what exactly? Well, I wanna walk you through what ASSC has gone through this fall. Our successes, how we achieved it. And before we can get to any of that, I wanna give thanks to all the people behind ASSC. The fact that the getting the people in front of the current, talking to them. Behind the current shenanigans and getting it to work, it just wouldn't happen without all these folks. And that's why I wanna give all my love to them. Now, two, something we've all faced. Despite the shelter in place order, faculty, students, in district level, we've all felt it. But instead of worrying about how can we get students to the campus? We took the campus to the students. And what that meant was over thirty-five events hosted and supported spanning cultures, holidays and causes. And I wanna go into our process of how this how this was made. And it goes into three phases. Our pre-phase where we work on the development of purpose and execution of these events. We wanna make sure anytime we display something is purposeful with a reason and that if you come there for fun or for education, there's something for you. Then the during, the designation rolls in front of behind the currents. So we make sure our speaker, all they have to worry worry about is being themselves and doing the best they can in the moment. And the people behind the current, they just keep feeding the information, feedback, make sure this ship keeps sailing. And now my personal favorite part, post, where we debrief, understand, deconstruct what we just did. And we just feed it into the next pre-phase. So each event in some way feeds into the next one, no matter what content we put into it. A way we've been hosting online content is through community padlets. Now you may be asking yourself, what is a padlet? Well. It's a social platform used to engage through public personal messages. Compared to where online, everybody's anonymous. You don't know where that message is coming from or if they're part of your community. And talking about community. We have the Bay Nihon Collaboration Open Mics. And the goal set first and foremost by these events is one to be eye-opening and focus on collaboration. We were eye-opening to our students because we gave them interpersonal local awareness, especially during the Fiesta showcase. Where we had a bunch of talent pop on and give a piece of their heart. And collaboration was, again, we spotlighted community organization and resources. And we just wanna keep hammering home the point that, hey, we're here for the community and culture. Let's enjoy it. Let's understand each other. Something else we had our students learn was voter education. This had a different form of collaboration. We gathered political resources to empower the voter. And this fed into our goal, being accessible to all levels of political familiarity. This kinda led to awakening in some of our students. The fact that sacrifices were made to make sure every single person within the United States has the right to vote. And this kinda feeds into the my personal high point within this month was hosting casting your vote. And I would I would describe the juicy part for me was. Students asking in-office district representatives questions, like they hit them with some real stuff, like how is my community affected? How am I affected? And that it was just engaging. Something else we had was very engaging was Latinx Heritage Month. Here we worked with faculty as special guest, a student from executive council. And this followed a overall theme of bonding. For entertainment night, students shared a space and team spirit. You know, you get your board game out, you wanna win, but you also know that, hey. We're still at the end of part of the same team. For student success workshop, we there was a promotion of bonding through vulnerability when we had them right. And for intersectionality, there was a lot of dialogue about culture and identity in terms of being Latinx. Or LGBT. And now I wanna talk about something else I want you guys to be aware of. Mental health awareness. And this month was just of reflection, again, identity and a healthy relationship. And what was eye-opening to some of our students was understanding where the line is between healthy and unhealthy. Relationships and that it does exist. And with Cora, in my role in creating safer spaces for others workshop series. We offered student professional skills and knowledge with campus community. LGBTQ plus history month. Where. This was a month of reflection, identity and healthy relationships. And what was eye-opening for our students was understanding that there is a line between healthy and unhealthy relationships and how to find it. With Cora, the my role in creating safer spaces for others workshop series. Offered students professional skills and knowledge with campus community. Filipino-American history month. May not see it, but. This month was most engaged by students. Now some feedback and highlight from them. There was words of nostalgia during the music panel due to sharing childhood memories. And reliving music when you were younger and a sense of pride. Connecting the new generations who were also there to their perspective and their taste and the reasoning for it. To touch on our educators discussion panel. There was a sense of students being awestruck due to narrative intertwining with each of our panelists. And they boiled it down to their stories were impactful. Hearing was impactful. Now I wanna talk about Tornah, which was an interstate California event from San Diego to Bay Area. And it's where we had a community gathered to learn about different Filipino programs and learning committees. Like the Coab-Bayon Learning Committee at Skyline. And a personal favorite part about this month is that we had a considerable amount of former students come by and participate. Cultural appreciation had many things going for it. And the first event I would like to talk about was Pechubin. And from a facilitator's perspective. They were able to stay vulnerable, but also enjoying the moment. And for students, it was powerful because of the cultural and personal connections they were able to build. And on an intercultural level, there was many paths because of many students, many starts we have. But in some regards, their stories are very similar, very relatable due to the content. And as for Native American Heritage Month, it was very family oriented. The Thompson sisters were very heartfelt with their stories. It was a very personal place they were coming from. And the Q and A, leaded by the students, touched on very, very deep points of. How how does a seemingly foreign perspective connect with something almost nearly forgotten by people? And. For our holidays, we had United Nation Day celebration. A highlight of this was our clubs are still active and they're hosting stuff like this that still gets interaction. And for our vets on Veterans Day. It was all driven by vets, focused for vets. And what an outstanding success for that community. It just provided fulfilling content that they could say, this is ours. And with that being said, I just wanna say thank you. Happy holidays. We look forward to the future always in AS. And I hope to see you guys in Black History Month. And all I can say is goodbye and thank you. This is Carlos Ungo and I'm signing off. Goodbye.
Great, thank you, Carlos. Trustee Jade, anybody else?
Yes, our last group is the associated students of the College of San Mateo with the president Joseph and vice president Diana.
Thank you.
Hi, we have a slide ready.
Was that slide, you have it, you have it with with you right now?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, I think, let me see here. I'm gonna need to promote you to panelist, but I think you should be able to share and then we'll just demote you after.
Okay, cool.
Let me know if you're able to to share now.
Give me a second. You guys see my screen?
Yes.
Alright, hi, everyone. I'm Joseph Wee. I am the twenty twenty CSM president. My vice president, unfortunately not here today, she has a medical issue. But I will be walking you through a summary of our events for this fall semester. Alright, so these are our executive officers and these are our senators. We currently have fifteen senators, two unfortunately had to resign. We found one semester, our one senator this semester, Alec Ufo, and we will be appointing a new one in the spring. So we have four boards. We have the IFC board that deal with political issues. We have the cultural awareness board that deal with cultural. Events and holidays. We have the programming board. There are more general boards and programs events. We have our PR board that promotes our events as most of our events now are online through our Instagram. We're currently looking for different platforms, hopefully Facebook or Gmail, something of the sort. So for August twenty twenty, we had our welcome week. This is a chance for new students and actually returning students as we invited. Old students who have transferred to come back and talk to new students. Give them some tips on how to succeed at CSM and tips to apply. Overall, really successful and happy with meeting new students. For September twenty twenty, we have the Native American history event, just a run-through of. The Native Americans who once occupied this land and centers and how we affected them and the history of these Native Americans. Within that same month, we had a public statement on our Instagram for Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter movements. And supporting them. This was posted alongside the colleges statement. To compliment. In October twenty twenty, we held our first virtual club fair. This is actually very successful as clubs online have been struggling for participation. And we've had twenty-plus active clubs and over fifty students come, which is very good. Further on in the month, we had a virtual hangout just to relax as this beginning semester. And we also had a Halloween event. We had Instagram contest and. And you get prizes and we had a couple of students win Amazon gift cards. For November, we had election season and our advocacy board was very successful. They pumped out a lot of information, including a video guide. And slides talking about propositions and candidates, both local and federal. Besides that, we also had a host party for the election when it first launched on the third. And we also had point the Latinx Club and cultural awareness, all co-hosts at an event for Day of the Dead. And they watched Coco and they talked about the history and origin of the event. We also had a Thanksgiving dinner for people who might not be able to celebrate it with anyone else. And we also had International Education Week and a mental health through music events. December, it was a smaller month, less events because of finals. And we had two study halls and a Home Alone movie night on Sunday seconds. Our plans for spring twenty twenty one, we are very excited for Black History Month in February. We're planning very still in the works. But we're very excited to have a speaker series on February. Still in progress and to support that, we have our cultural awareness and advocacy. Planning some Black History events to go along that educate our students. We will also, as ASCS, including the boards, be pushing for more racial equity and pushing for the ethnic studies recruitment. Near the end of semester, we have some cooldown events, the Springling and Film Festival. And thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Let's get our screen back.
Alright, give me a second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Jade, anything you'd like to add at this point?
Um, I just wanna say to the associated students that I, as a student, I'm always so proud to see the work that you do. Especially in during this time, everything's virtual and I know it's so hard to stay connected to our students. But all three of our councils in each of their own way, they find ways to kind of. Cut down on the digital divide for our students and always make them feel that they're still connected, even though we're not in person. So I just wanna say that I am so proud of all the work that all three campuses have been doing this past semester and I look forward to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Jade. Board members. Trustee Goodman.
Just like to say, couldn't have said it any better, trustee Jeanette, appreciate you and your leadership as well. But to the associated students of at Kenyatta, associate students at Skyline and CSM. It's really tremendous to see students showing up for students and continuing to to be there to to make this time. As seamless as possible. It's this is challenging for so many people with so many. With dealing with death, dealing with hardship, you know, unemployment, underemployment. And our students and our educational community have shown up and it's just tremendous and it's really. An extension of what we've seen all year with our district showing up with regards to food insecurity and the like. And so thank you so much for your leadership and continued success this next year.
Looks like trustee Petri says unmuted herself.
I just wanted to say again, echo my thanks from trustee Goodman. Thank you to you students for your presentations. The the breadth and depth of what you've been doing is just absolutely inspiring and I look so forward to. To move to engaging with you as we move forward. So thank you for that work.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Then let me add my, yes, you know what, for all trustees that are new, just give me a high sign if you wanna speak so that we could. Then let me add my, yes, uh, you know what, for all trustees that are new, just give me a high sign if you want to speak so that we could figure out how to do it. The trustee Pimentel. You got it, there you go.
I was just giving a thumbs up, Tom. That was, that was a great presentation.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you. All right. It looks to me like, uh, our students are doing the best they can under the situation and a a marvelous job, just a marvelous job. I I didn't expect to see that much good stuff going on with the handicap that they have uh, of this, you know, life that we're living. And it's just gratifying and makes us all very proud of of all of our students and everything that's going on at our, at our colleges. So please make sure that, uh, the word goes back to everyone back, uh, through the students that, uh, the board is very grateful and we're here to support you in any way we can. Okay, let's move on to the next item, uh, an item that we'll have back on the agenda happily, uh, so we can begin to uh, relook at issues. This would be twenty twelve, two C contemporary conversations regarding race, class, gender, privilege and equity. And today we'd like to have a discussion on the recent court actions of reinstating the DACA program, which is, uh, uh, something that is very close to our hearts because of so many students that we deal with. And, um, uh, we don't have a presentation per se. Uh, this really is on tonight for the board to share its thoughts and, uh, to, uh, basically comment and and, uh, and 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 give our impression of what we see, where we're going and how we can as a community, we as a community can advance this. Uh, would someone like to kick it off? Yes, trustee Goodman, I see you're making your moves there. There you go.
Try to unmute myself.
Thank you.
I appreciate this item, uh, getting on the agenda. Um, I think for me, the, uh, one of the, the initial concerns is ensuring that, obviously because of the administration, there were limited opportunities for our district to provide access to and and support of of our students and providing services to our DACA students. And so my concern is how do, how have we, um, been able to kind of circle back and and backfill some of that support, uh, to our students? I know we were finding creative ways to supporting them, but how can we ensure now and just kind of fully provide the support and access to services, um, to those students in light of what we are, uh, obviously the reinstatement of DACA and um, providing those supports to these students with regards to, you know, our COVID response as a district.
I think those are, uh, those are very good concerns and now that, you know, we're moving in the right direction. I I think the administration has at all the campuses, uh, has a wonderful opportunity now to gear this up and to move in the direction of supporting these students. And obviously with the new administration that's coming in in Washington, I mean, this has to just continue to move in the right direction. But I also think that this is just one facet of what has to happen. I mean, we've talked in the past that the, that the entire immigration system needs to be overhauled. It it affects so many people. And, um, I mean, uh, you, you hear stories about people who try and do things the right ways and they get caught up in the system uh, that they can't seem to get out of that is overwhelming and a lot of people just give up. Uh, so it's a big nut to crack and, um, I think that's an area we have to move in as well. Any other thoughts? Yes, trustee, uh, Petries.
I have a question. Um, are there, uh, specific organizations, student organizations on campus? The DACA students have either been, uh, leading or, um, trying to organize around. And it would be great at some point to sort of hear from them what some of their needs are now. Um, even in the transition to this much better situation with DACA being reinstated, I'm just, just so glad to see that. And I'm hopeful that we're going to see other efforts like that moving forward. But it would be great to, um, you know, hear from, again, hear from the students who have actually been working in this area who are closest to really understanding what kind of support it is that they would really be most beneficial.
President Lopez, I see you nodding your head. Can I prevail upon you to chime in and and share some information?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. And then, uh, Dr. Moreno and Dr. Moore can add as well. So all three of our, uh, campuses, um, have a dream center in which we have, uh, staff that work directly with our DACA students, our DACA to be, or our soon to be students who who might qualify for DACA. And so once we heard of this reinstatement of the DACA program, we, we sent out an email from our dream center to all our students with, uh, a flyer on the top five things you need to know about the DACA reinstatement. We also offer, um, on an ongoing basis, all three of our colleges offer immigration and legal Q and A sessions. And this is for our students and for community members that want to talk to an immigration lawyer to find out specifically about their unique situation. So these have been ongoing, um, support services that we've offered our students for many years now. And so this time, certainly this month has been a, a critical month to get information out so students can know whether or not they should, um, submit their application.
Great. Uh, ladies, uh, oh, yes, trustee.
Do, and maybe this is a question for Kim, uh, do, do the dream centers do any, uh, proactive outreach to our high schools to try and, uh, identify potential students who may be DACA students in the high schools who might not know they have a safe place to to start college? Uh, and and if we're not doing that, uh, what would it take for us to 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 do some outreach to our high schools in the county?
I see that, uh, Melissa had her hand up, so I'm going to go ahead and let, let, give her some airtime on this one.
Thank you. Thanks, Kim. Uh, yeah, so we, we also have a dream center like, uh, President Lopez said. And one of the things that we do is help with matriculation. And so we do outreach to, uh, the high schools with phone calls and Zoom meetings with the high school counselors and students and parents so that we can help them apply and get into Skyline. We also collaborate with our admissions and records through the Dream Center to process the students so that we can, we, we provide sort of wraparound services to ensure that they get enrolled in classes. And then a host of other services like, uh, President Lopez mentioned.
Great, great. Uh, President Moore?
Uh, yes, thank you. We do the same thing at Kenyatta. Um, we are engaged with Securing Union High School District to make sure that our students working in collaboration with our Dream Center and with our outreach directors and coordinators have that same information. Also too, all three campuses have middle college, high school programs onsite. So those students can have access earlier if they so choose. High school students are not required as well as college students to like, to identify by legal status. So we really share both information on, for example, fast for forms, KDA forms. So the students have information about what they can apply for, what financial aid they have available to them. Um, but we work through our dream centers in collaboration with our high school districts and counselors and partnerships to make sure that that information is shared in the community as well as throughout the high schools that we work with.
Uh, trustee Hallibur, you had your hand up.
Just a quick couple of comments. Uh, you know, back in beginning of twenty seventeen, when the current, uh, president took office, uh, we had a lot of discussions around the attack on, um, undocumented students. And we took a very strong position that we were going to make it clear our campuses were a welcoming place for everyone that had a desire to, uh, get a higher education or training or advance their lives. So it, it, it sounds like everything, we've heard these reports that, you know, our, our, uh, college presidents and our college campuses are are carrying out the board direction, which I think is a terrific thing. And now things are, um, turning a new corner, uh, for the better. In terms of the legal attacks, uh, I guess are 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 now going to be a thing of the past at the federal level. So, uh, I guess I'm just wondering out loud if there is any additional direction needed because I think we've basically instructed everybody throughout the, the college community to, uh, to, to be there, to be strong, to be forceful, to, uh, be advocates and, uh, do everything that we can to reach out to students and potential students to welcome them and, uh, make this a place where they can learn without fear of their, uh, status in the eyes of the current administration. So is there anything else needed in terms of board direction?
Well, let me ask this, uh, along that same line. How, uh, because we have such a, uh, almost corner of the market because we have a lot of students, uh, is there, are there any other ways that we can collaborate with other, uh, community organizations, municipalities, the county, the state, uh, that are also doing like things? So, uh, you know, we can, uh, access whatever help we can get from those entities as well directly to our students because we do have kind of like the pipeline. So that might be one, uh, one, one avenue to explore and see if we can collaborate with others who are like-minded and that can also provide resources. Uh, I don't know how we would do that or who would be, uh, the best to look. But I mean, I will kick it back to the presidents and if any of the board members know, uh, this would, uh, this would be a good information to share. Yes, Chancellor.
I, I was, that's a great, uh, great comment. And I, I would think, and I'll leave it to the presidents that, you know, a really a natural point of contact is to our dream center. And you have people that are working so closely with students and I, I surmise that they're pretty tightly integrated into the community resources as well as my, it's a guest, an educated guest. And I, I think I would turn it over to the presidents, but I, I believe those dream centers are pretty well wired into the community. But I'd like to hear there from Kim and Melissa and Jamila on that. So I have a, I guess a question. Um, are there any unmet, um, needs? And I guess this is to the presidents and, um, in trying to address some of the, uh, needs of our students over the last few months that because of the restraints, um, of the, uh, current administration, outgoing administration, um, that we need to address. I guess I want to know, I guess, directly if there's anything that we should be doing that wasn't being done before that we can try to, we, you know, fill the needs of of those students, their immediate needs, whether it's the food and security that we were preparing and providing, um, access to, uh, cards, to Safeway and things like that for our, for other students that, uh, because of the way the funding was at some point, we couldn't provide as much to, um, some of our, um, our DACA students.
I'm happy to, to make an attempt to address that question, trustee Goodman. Uh, one of the things that, um, we are looking at specifically is obviously to begin to, um, to, uh, look at other barriers with the enrollment process to support our undocumented students. And so for example, at least at Kenyatta, we are working with, uh, Alas, A L A S in Half Moon Bay, uh, to support high numbers of, um, undocumented farm workers in that area. So we're trying to take some of those resources, um, that we provide, that we would provide on campus if we were face to face and how do we kind of take that somewhat on the road? So we have a site out at Half Moon Bay. And so we are trying to work in those areas to share that information far and wide. Because as you know, one of the big barriers of this is first and foremost, is dissemination of information and what our dream centers can offer. So we're trying to find ways to, through our outreach teams, to get that message far and wide. Now that DACA is on the path of reinstatement, we're working kind of around the clock to make sure that students know that and that our working partners that we have in the community know that so they can share that information. So I think for us, first and foremost, is to kind of find additional ways to scale that up so that we can reach far and wide more of those students and their families who are in need.
I would add also that, um, our students also, um, need mental health support and scholarship support. So we, we focus on that as well.
Thank you.
Um, trustee Goodman, this isn't related necessarily to the question you asked about our current administration and the fact that we're in COVID. But one thing I know the vice presidents are discussing, and this is something that we talked about a few years ago, uh, but it's come back up again and that's this, um, this ability for California community colleges. There's a, a, a law that allows us to not charge our students who take, who are non-residents and the, and who enroll in six or less units. And so this can have a, a positive impact for, um, our students who perhaps want to take just an English as a second language course for three units or so. And so sometimes, as you can imagine, the non-resident fee can be a real barrier. But it's also generates revenue for our district. So that's kind of, you know, the rub there, um, is that if we were to decide to enact this law, which would then allow us to waive the non-resident fees for our students who take six or less units, it would have a financial impact. And so we would have to make a decision very thoughtfully, especially given the times we're in. If this is something that we feel the benefit would outweigh the risk. So I'm just letting you know that this is a conversation that's starting with our vice presidents and then it will move to our cabinet, our presidents and the chancellor for us to really look at. And then, of course, eventually it would be shared with the board in terms of a direction. If we decide it's, uh, uh, you know, if the benefit far, far, far outweighs, um, the cost. So just a little heads up there, it might be coming your way.
Thank you so much, President Lopez. I, I also want us to make sure we take advantage of our partnerships with, uh, you know, our county supervisors. We have a, a senator on the, on the call now. I mean, let's take advantage of those, uh, partnerships and, uh, collaboration opportunities to ensure that we're not reinventing the wheel, that we're basically enhancing some of the services that are already, uh, within these some communities. And if we're that point of contact, let's make sure that they know that so they can, uh, take advantage of us as well and, uh, continue to make sure that our students are getting the support and access they need.
Uh, I think, um, I think really, uh, this was a, a great discussion. And I, I, I think everyone understands that this is not just the one and done for the board. This is a continuing issue that we are interested in over the long haul. And, uh, with the permission of, uh, my colleagues, I'd like to see if, uh, uh, the presidents and the administration can follow up with us on some of the points that we put out there and, uh, give us, uh, maybe an update somewhere in the near future on, you know, where, where we're moving in those areas and what collaborations we've been able to make. And especially since, you know, this, this is now, uh, a moving item, uh, in the government. Uh, and so let's not, let's not miss the boat on it. Let's continue to move forward as we have. And, uh, I, I, I would like to see an update if my colleagues would as well, somewhere down the line.
Absolutely.
Okay, yes. Uh, any, any further comments on this then? Thank you. Thank you very much for all that participated and shared. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to do this, uh, again, uh, every, every, every meeting, hopefully where this is supposed to come up because it's a valuable, it's a valuable part of our agenda. Thing is, is that I, I would, I would be very appreciative of board members sharing other topics that you would like to have put on this so we can, you know, get everyone's viewpoint and and everyone's interest levels. And if there are things that you would like, uh, particular issues that, that you would like the board to take up under this area of a contemporary conversation, please share them, um, with, uh, with me or the chancellor so we can get them on the agendas and get the information that we need to be able to have these kind of important, meaningful discussions. And out of discussions, hopefully will come positive actions, uh, as well as awareness. So, um, uh, with that, uh, I'd like to move on then to the next item in our agenda, which is the statement from executives and student representatives. Chancellor Claire.
Thank you so much, President Nouris. And, um, I don't have a, a report, but I do want to, um, personally congratulate our newest trustees, trustee Pimentel and trustee Petries. I know, um, I, uh, met with both of them, uh, individually on Saturday and I think I had allocated about an hour each. And I think we, I think we had some great conversations and there was more than an hour and, and I appreciate your, you've just hit the ground running. Asked great questions, bring a, a new perspective and, and welcome, welcome to the San Mateo County Community College District. Again, I want to once again, uh, congratulate trustee Goodman on your reelection and, um, looking forward to working with you. And then finally, uh, congratulations to President Nouris and Vice President Oliver on your appointment, um, in your new role. Uh, I, I think we're all looking forward to twenty twenty one, uh, in so many different ways. And I think it's an opportunity to really, really move. And I think it's an opportunity to really, really move forward in a positive direction. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. I don't have a specific report. For those of you that are new, I really, this is an opportunity to the presidents to talk about what's occurring at the campuses, but only if it's really, really new and not in the executive report. So I, they're usually shy, which is good. But I would call on any of the three presidents that there is something of significance you'd like to share.
Just real quick, Mike, I promise I won't take more than just my 30 seconds. I just want to welcome trustee Pimentel and our trustee Petritas. And again, congratulations, trustee Goodman. I really look forward to getting to know both of you. And the other thing is, in case you don't, are not hooked into the CSM Bulldog Bulletin, that's where you'll find out everything that's going on at the College of San Mateo. So please let me know if you're, if you did not receive our latest edition. We also have one for the students too, and you can check both of them out. And I will make sure that you get a copy of our Bulldog Bulletin. So welcome again.
I too would like to welcome the new trustees to the board. If there's anything you need, I hope you reach out, happy to have a conversation, and we're very excited to have you.
I also would like to welcome our newly elected board trustee members and our reelected trustee Goodman to the board. Look forward to working with all of you and let us know how we can continue to be of assistance and a resource to ensuring that students have what they need. So congratulations and welcome. Look forward to working with you.
All right. Does that conclude?
We have a few, a little further to go here, President Nouris. CFO Slater is out tonight and will be back after the first of the year. She's fine, but she does not have a report. But I did want to give an opportunity for District Academic Senate President Wallace to address the board.
Yes, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. And I'm gonna take a really long time, President Nurse.
For you, Jeremy, go right ahead as much as you'd like.
Right on. Thank you, Chancellor Claire. Congrats, trustees Pimentel and Petritas, and welcome back, trustee Goodman. Glad you're still a part of this board. So I did, I just, sorry, I did have a quick update. And again, I emailed you all a resolution that the District Academic Senate passed a couple of weeks ago, supporting the formation of ethnic studies departments across the district. And so I'm just going to kind of quickly paraphrase and just share kind of the important points from that, because it is a pretty lengthy resolution. So as you may know, in August, the California State Assembly passed AB 1460, which required all CSU students to take an ethnic studies course before graduating, or it will require all CSU students to take an ethnic studies course before graduating. As a result, the CSUs determined that this new ethnic studies requirement should be fulfilled in the students' first two years of college, which has resulted in the addition of an Area F to the CSU transfer requirements. Area F requires students transferring to a CSU to complete three units, which have been moved out of the social science area and into its own ethnic studies area. And just over a week ago, the CSUs made it clear that they will only be accepting courses with an ethnic studies prefix for Area F or a non-ethnic studies course that is cross-listed with an ethnic studies course. The CSU guidance notes that cross-listing must be approved by mutual consent between the ethnic studies department and the other department requesting the cross-listing. All right. Nevertheless, it is clear that the new ethnic studies transfer requirement necessitates the formation of ethnic studies departments with ethnic studies faculty who meet the minimum qualifications for ethnic studies as dictated by the state chancellor's office. Currently, the process of establishing these departments is underway. The District Academic Senate does have an ethnic studies task group. And as part of that, we've released some recommendations to the local colleges. And the CSM full-time ethnic studies faculty have been working with Skyline Kenyatta faculty to clone ethnic studies courses to Skyline and Kenyatta. But we will be needing ethnic studies faculty to teach ethnic studies courses, because ethnic studies is an important offering for all our students, not just ethnic studies majors or sociology majors. And because ethnic studies is now a CSU transfer requirement, and because ethnic studies is a discipline that is predominantly comprised of scholars of color, the senate is recommending the hiring of tenure-track faculty at Skyline and Kenyatta for the ethnic studies department and discipline. All right, CSM, as you may know, already has full-time faculty and a department. The District Academic Senate would like to ask the board to support the senate's recommendations, both in spirit and financially. In order to alleviate the burden to Skyline and Kenyatta, for example, we'd like the district to provide the resources for hiring at least two full-time ethnic studies hires, one for Skyline and one for Kenyatta. I'd also like to suggest that we do a more comprehensive presentation discussion about this new transfer requirement and about ethnic studies as a discipline. I think that a discussion about ethnic studies would be a really good way to do that, the contemporary conversations piece of this agenda. And we could invite our ethnic studies faculty to a board meeting to kind of explain their discipline. And we could bring in some of our articulation officers to explain the new requirement. So with that, like, thank you for your consideration. Congrats again to trustees Pimentel and Petritas and to trustee Goodman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, and President Nouris, that concludes our, our report.
Great, thank you. Well, I think, I think this will be something that we would want to come back, obviously, in our agenda for a further discussion and action. And so I guess the administration can accept that as a directive at this point to prepare that somewhere down the line in the near future. Moving then down the agenda, we have statement from other representative groups. Do we have any, any representatives updates from AFT Local 1493? Mr. Bailey.
Mr. President, you have Monica Malamud.
Oh, all right.
Good evening. My name is Monica Malamud. Yeah, good evening. So I'm Monica Malamud. I'm a professor of Spanish at Kenyatta College and a member of AFT's Executive Committee. And on behalf of AFT, as well as myself personally, I would like to thank outgoing trustees, Corinne Schwartz and Dave Malnicar, who have given our district over 40 years of combined service for their commitment and dedication to the residents of San Mateo County, and in particular to our district's students and employees over so many years as trustees on our district board. AFT congratulates Maurice Goodman on his reelection. And we at AFT also welcome our new trustees, Lisa Petritas and John Pimentel. Our district is very fortunate to have you on the Board of Trustees. And we know that you bring skills and experience to our board that will greatly benefit our district. AFT looks forward to working with the Board of Trustees. Now, on a different note, AFT realizes that as trustees, you don't often have the opportunity to see firsthand the daily workings of teaching and learning in our district. And we believe that AFT, along with the other faculty and staff constituent groups, can provide trustees with much-needed glimpses into those daily workings. I have no doubt that you have noticed how vocal our district's part-time faculty have been about the conditions of their employment in our district. In an effort to cobble together an income they can live on, many of our part-time faculty also work in other districts. And they find that the differences in pay and benefits between our district and surrounding districts are significant. Some agents leave our district for better pay districts, and it is difficult to replace them and deal with the turnover. AFT believes that those outside of the faculty ranks are not fully aware of the extent of the disparities in salary and benefits. We often hear that our district prides itself on being among the top paying districts in the Bay Area. But in doing so, our district ignores the working reality of over 600 part-time faculty. Now, while the dire inequities suffered by agent faculty in our district have existed for many years, the pandemic has exacerbated an already untenable situation. So AFT would like the board to consider scheduling a study session to fully explore part-time faculties' working conditions and the impact that the disparities I mentioned have on their lives. AFT would be happy to participate and provide data. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Mr. Bailey, anyone from CSEA?
I don't see anyone at this time.
How about DAFSMI, FLCIO Local 829 or Council 57?
Also, I don't see anyone seeking recognition.
All right, thank you. So we're going to again take up statements from the public on non-agendized items, even though we did hear comment earlier, because it is here. Yes, trustee Pimentel?
Tom, before we leave that point that was raised by the AFT, I very much would like to have that study session. What's the appropriate way for us to follow up on getting that scheduled and, and queued up for discussion?
Thank you. The chancellor will get back to you on that and give you an update on where we are on that, and we can get that moving as well. Perhaps that would be a good discussion to have directly with the chancellor, so we can get your thinking on that and, and be able to discuss it and get it on.
Thank you.
We're looking again now, is there anyone else from the public on non-agendized items, Vice Chancellor Bailey?
Yes, Mr. President, you have two at this point in time, one or three. Michael Hoffman.
All right.
Hello, my name is Michael Hoffman. I teach mathematics at Kenyatta College. I have two children, age two, two and a half and five and a half, and was fortunate to take advantage of some of the leave that was on offer for fall. And I want to talk about how important that leave policy is. And I, and I want to encourage the board to continue those leave policies and extend faculty and staff leaves for, for, for parents. I am, we were very lucky to have our first child attend the Child Development Center at College of San Mateo. And due to COVID-19, our second child was not able to be admitted. And one of the things that has made that very clear, has become very clear is that now the kind of structure and thoughtful educational process that the amazing practitioners at CDC, the Mary Lazarus Child Development Center at CSM, they do amazing work. And it really has felt like a severe deprivation that our second child has not had that. Because of the lack of access to childcare, because childcare centers are either closed or very expensive, the parents at home become the primary educators for our, for our children. And we, even though we have relatively, even though we're, you know, we may be relatively privileged in terms of our position in the workforce, it does not mean that we can afford the kinds of expensive childcare that would allow our children to have other trained adults working with our children during the day, during normal times. What this means is that any actual work responsibility, so trying to get work done, attending any of these Zoom meetings puts a tremendous strain on our ability to be the primary educators for our children. And that poses a very difficult tension. I have a statement from another, from another faculty member. Her name is Valeria Estrada. She's also from Kenyatta College. And she sent this note, and I just wanted to read what it said. So this is also her statement. She said, "We are lucky our daughter started a new preschool in person this fall. I have a lot of mixed emotions of having her go to school during a pandemic, but I think either option would have had me nervous. Mid-March to May, mid-August to September of this year were incredibly hard moments, having to juggle work and being a parent. In retrospect, I should have taken a leave in spring 2020, because when, because what I went through was a challenge I didn't have to endure. My partner is a kindergarten teacher, and having to coordinate time between us to work and be there for our daughter was stressful. Our home was not a happy place. If things were to change and her school suddenly closed, I would seek a paid leave option. Without a paid leave option, it is not possible to take care of all our responsibilities without affecting our well-being. And I would add to that, without affecting our children's well-being and without affecting our students' well-being. Because as we know, as the research has made clear on student success, that our ability to connect and have emotional capacity and being, and take the time to follow up with our students is key to their success, especially for our underrepresented students, our students of color. And that means that leave policies allow us to really do our job and also have a time for, for our children, who are being deprived oftentimes of, of their contact to other trained adults. And you can follow, and you may have been following what the school districts are doing. It looks like there will be at most hybrid school in, in spring for at least a San Mateo Foster City School District, which means that we get only half of the normal in-person time if, if you were lucky enough to have your teacher choose that option. So it's, it's a very difficult situation for parents. And even parents who make some decent level of income are basically costed out of, of access to these sort of, the, the kinds of care that, that people who are high-income have access to.
Well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Hoffman. I appreciate them. Vice Chancellor Bailey.
President, next you have Suzanne Poma.
All right, welcome.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Suzanne Poma, and I'm a tenure counselor at Skyline College, and I've been with the college since 2011. I too would like to address the need for parental leave due to COVID. Last March, when we went into shelter-in-place, we had my daughter Iris, now eight, and son Julian, now four, at home with us due to school closures. My husband's a high school teacher, so you can imagine that both of us had many demands of face-to-face student contact time, not to mention the pivot to virtual learning. In order to get by, we did what many parents did. We let our kids watch up to seven, six or seven hours of TV a day, something I am not proud to say. After they went to bed, we did non-student contact work at night. We slept maybe four or five hours a night. For those who are parents or early child educators, you know that we were well beyond the recommended guidelines for electronics. And with that comes more behavioral issues, not to mention that their lives had been upended. Children like routine, and we couldn't provide it at the level they needed it. The homeschooling charts posted on Instagram at the time only made failure feel more real. This fall, I was able to work modified hours while my eight-year-old daughter does virtual school, as her school remains closed due to COVID. My son's preschool fortunately reopened without incidents, although aftercare was closed. My daughter now has about six hours a week where she goes with very limited parental supervision. And TV is no longer central to their lives, and the behavioral pitfalls are mostly gone. I'm a better parent, a better counselor, and a better homework helper to my daughter, and we're all sleeping a little more. As a counselor, I need to be laser accurate, as one mistake can result in setting a student back a semester or even a year. Students are being asked to navigate so much right now, and my being able to show up, acknowledge, listen, and respond is even more important in this moment. Being present and focused is paramount to my work. Due to the nature of this virus, we are one exposure away from my son's preschool being closed, likely for two to four-week period. And when anyone in the family gets sick with anything, we are expected to stay home or return after a negative test. This spring, I will go back to my full load and will likely leave my daughter to her own devices more hours, and she will likely fall behind on assignments. If that one exposure happens, we may go back to a repeat scenario of last spring. Please tell me how I can keep counseling and providing support to my students without the vital assistance of a paid family leave option from the district when my daughter and possibly son are at home because they cannot go to school. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Mr. President, next you have Eliza Arpelo.
All right, thank you, Eliza Arpelo.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Dr. Eliza Arpelo.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Dr. Liza Arpelo. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. My name is Dr. Liza Arpelo, and I am a tenured professor at Skyline College, where I've been teaching English and literature for eighteen years. I'm also the coordinator for the Kababayan Learning Community, as well as one of the advisors for the Filipino Student Union. My daughters are seven and nine years old, first and fourth grade. Since August, my girls have been attending classes online every day from nine AM to twelve thirty PM. In the afternoons, my older daughter has a second session, use a science class, then finishes for the day around two thirty. My younger daughter is done with instruction for the day at twelve thirty and is expected to independently complete her homework at that time. At the same time during the week, I teach synchronously, starting at ten AM on Mondays and Wednesdays, two PM on Tuesdays. Thursdays and Fridays are for office hours, committee meetings, curriculum development, and coordination time. There have been days when I've been on Zoom from ten AM to six PM, jetting out of my office to grab a quick bite, throw something in the microwave for the kids to eat, then run back to the next meeting. I'm the only person at home with the girls, as my husband works in IT and is at work from seven thirty in the morning to six o'clock at night. Because we all have different schedules, I'm often juggling between meeting the instructional needs of my students and the everyday needs of my children. Everything from opening a jar of peanut butter to helping them to reconnect to Zoom when they get booted off, or even giving them hugs and encouraging words when they get frustrated with their homework, which they're expected to do their do on their own, all while I'm teaching my students at the same time. Like many of my colleagues, like Suzanne, like Michael, who do the double duty of teaching while parenting, I have been struggling. There's no separation between work and home for us. And yes, it's convenient for us to teach from home and it's safer. But the challenge is finding the time to prepare for our classes, attend meetings, lesson plan and grade, all the while trying to be a good parent. One of the things I really hate is having to tell my girls, "Not now," when I'm in the middle of a lecture, or telling them they have to wait until I'm done when they're hungry. We're all scheduled to be doing distance learning again in the spring, me as a professor and them as students. I'm hoping that it'll be easier this time, but I'm already honestly anticipating that it won't be. And I worry that burning out is inevitable for those of us teaching while parenting in this pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your thoughts. Mr. Bailey?
Mr. President, next you have Sue Wong.
All right.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Soon Young On, and I'm a full-time instructor of ESL at CSM, where I've been teaching since 2013. In this pandemic, as all instructors are, I'm continuously working on my curriculum in this new online environment to support students and to ensure that they have a seamless experience. I will continue to, I continue to support my students both academically and personally, in addition to fulfilling my duties as a full-time tenured instructor. Like many people in our community, my students have shared personal struggles they've encountered during the pandemic and have often needed a shoulder to cry on, even if it's virtual. And as we know, being a community college professor means we aren't just instructors. We're also mentors, mothers, and friends to our students. These roles are diminished. In fact, it means that my students need my support more than ever. I am doing everything I was before as an instructor, but with more strain on myself as a parent during the pandemic. I have a daughter who is in fourth grade and a little boy who started kindergarten in August. I am doing the best I can for my children during this time, but I often fall short. I try to make sure their online learning experience is going smoothly to ensure that they are staying physically healthy, wiping away their tears and encouraging them. And I try to fill up the emptiness they feel socially by being available when I can. Having children doing online school, why I'm also upholding my duties as a full-time instructor, means I am stretched thin without time to spare besides teaching and parenting. I cannot sacrifice my duties as a teacher or a mother, so I am instead sacrificing my sleep. I am up a couple of hours before they wake up to grade or work on lessons. And I'm up until one or two AM most nights, doing the same after I'm done teaching my evening classes. I'm not an outlier. I believe I'm just one of the many examples of our faculty members who are juggling parental duties in this online environment. Please tell me how we can keep our mental and physical sanity to teach and provide support to our students without the vital support from our district. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Bailey, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President, you have Leslie Ware.
All right. It's Ware.
Hi, I'm assuming you can hear me. I'm Leslie Ware, and I teach political science at Kenyatta College full-time. I've been there since 2001. And I too want to speak in regards to the parental family leave opportunity that we had this last semester, which was quite a relief. So instead of teaching my five classes as a full load, I was able to take the opportunity to teach three classes. I have two kids. My daughter is nine and she's in fourth grade, and my son is twelve. He's in seventh grade. So not only am I a teacher with the full contractual responsibilities at Kenyatta and our district, I've also been the TA, teaching assistant for my kids, technologist, chef, you have to do lunch, and anything else where they needed support. And I think my colleagues have made that really clear, how much you have to support your kids while they're learning at home. I live in San Francisco and SFUSD does not have plans, at least for my kids in their grades, to go back for next semester. I'm feeling a lot of stress thinking about this coming spring semester, knowing now that I'll have to teach five classes and continue to be the TA and supportive person for my kids to make sure that they have the best days that they can, considering that we're in our house all day long. This semester, and I am, I was actually surprised that we're at this point in December discussing this. It would have just been nice to see some proactivity in regards to this relief and support that we still need because nothing is different between this semester and next semester. The only difference is that we are not going to have the support that we really need from our district as working parents. And I, you know, this semester I was able to approach it with definitely more calm and confidence, feeling the support. And this coming semester, I have a lot of anxiety. I am definitely nervous about it. And something is going to give because that's that's just what's going to happen. I mean, my classes have forty-five students in it, so you know, we're looking at two hundred and fifty students. Students this semester and last semester need so much more support, which is not surprising. They are dealing with their own family members, if not themselves, getting COVID. You know, I've had students where both grandparents passed away from COVID, each of them not even being together, knowing about it. And so that student having to handle that, students have high anxiety right now. I spend a lot of time on Zoom talking students through what may seem like the simplest things to do, but during this time, it's not simple anymore. Doing research or fight, being frustrated by not finding an article that you may need for a paper can really throw the student off into the deep end and they become very discouraged. So I'm really hoping that you're listening to our voices as faculty and hearing the echoes of our students' voices who really need us right now, because one thing you can at least be proud of, and this is what I told my students this this week during finals week, is you can be proud, you completed this class. That's huge. People are suffering from depression and you you did something really positive for yourself. So I'm hoping that you can support us faculty and and having the time to support our students as much as they need it, as well as our own family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bailey?
Mr. President, next you have Nadia Sigona.
All right.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Nadia Sigona, and I have been an academic counselor at Kenyatta College for eight years. I also have two kids and a four-year, I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old. And first of all, I'm very thankful for being able to work from home during this pandemic. I love our students and I'm so happy to guide them and support them in this difficult time. I work during the spring and also I work August, September, and partially October without taking the the leave program. And I really tried, but it was very, very challenging. Since my husband doesn't, does essential work, it is, it was just me at home in charge of the kids. And like many of my colleague says, in order to be able to work, I have to make my kids watch tablets or TV for most of my shift. Before the pandemic, they were only allowed to watch the screen time for maybe thirty minutes, but after that, it was a many, many more time. And I noticed their development was getting behind. Also, the virtual school was very difficult. It is very difficult. You can imagine to have a two-year-old and a four-year-old in charge of their screens, trying to find the link for the Zoom link and their tablets. It's very hard for them to log in, connect to Zoom, mute and unmute themselves. I'm talking about a four-year-old and a two-year-old and to solve their own technical problems. Luckily, in October, I was able to use the pay family leave program, and honestly, it was a huge difference. It's still a challenge, I'm not gonna lie, but it's much more manageable. Now I'm able to schedule my counseling appointments after their virtual classes and and to follow a routine with them where I can serve them breakfast and lunch. Before the leave, I was able to serve the students, but it was hard to give my kids the help they needed. And now it has been super helpful to my family to have some leave in order to help my kids while continuing to give a great service to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. I have any more item? How many more people do we have, Vice Chancellor Bailey?
Mr. President, this is your last speaker, Larry Moody.
All right, that's fine, because we've exceeded our, well, we exceeded our twenty minutes for this item. Mr. Moody, go right ahead. You need to.
There we go. Hey, thank you to all the Chancellors and to all you who are in leadership. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to to share this evening. My name is Larry Moody. I'm a former mayor of the city of East Palo Alto. And I'm an alumni parent of a CSM graduate. And I am a tremendous fan of the Community College District. I'm so very proud to say that. I think you have demonstrated as a district for decades a strong commitment towards quality education for all the sons and daughters who are a part of San Mateo County and the surrounding neighborhoods. From Skyline to CSM to Kenyatta, we have tremendous facilities and tremendous educators on campus who are doing a tremendous job of creating value for our students. So I, first of all, to all of you, I just want to tip my hat and commend you and let you know that I am always going to be a strong supporter of the work that you have signed up to do. I didn't want the evening to go by without celebrating two of my friends. Maurice Goodman, thank you for signing up for another four years. Your leadership and your mentorship of me personally has been invaluable. But your commitment to not only the northern part of San Mateo County, but to us folks down here in the southern part of the county, where you have shown up for many events. You have sat in with our parents, you've sat in with our leadership. You know the temperament of our students here in the South County as well as the North. I call you a friend, a leader, and an individual who just brings tremendous value to the Community College District. So glad the voters decided to bring you back for another four-year term. I think that you're going to add some tremendous ideas and leadership as we get ready for 2021, which is going to be a challenging year in the education community. So I'm confident that you being there is going to help the district move some very tough agenda items through. And once again, thank you for your service. And to my friend John Kimmeltel, who, and and I really am saying this not only for John's benefit, to let him know how much I appreciate him, but I want to say this for his colleagues. You the former, you the trustees that are going to be working with John, who's the first time elected official, that he worked our East Palo Alto community as if he was running for local government here. And the community of East Palo Alto responded in a very strong favorable way at the at the at the ballots. And it was only because he gave us the same level of support attention that he had to provide for the other surrounding communities in his district. That bodes well for us here in East Palo Alto. We are a very relation, relation-driven community. And John has a friend down here in East Palo Alto for the length of his service. And we do anticipate that we are going to have a advocate for the students and families here in East Palo Alto to make sure that not only our DACA students, but all our students have a pathway into the Community College system, which is, which is really a great place to be. And then also, I want to celebrate Dr. Jamila Moore and her team at Kenyatta College. They have just have been tremendous in doing the outreach in this community, letting the students and the families know that Kenyatta College welcomes them and not only welcomes them, but are preparing for their attendance at the, on the campus. What she has done with the Promise Program and the Shuttle Program has really broken some barriers for many of the families down here in East Palo Alto. And I just want to celebrate her leadership on that Kenyatta campus and her team of excellent professionals that I have certainly enjoyed working with. And just finally, in the spirit of our friend Tom Moore, who was someone I worked alongside with for decades and someone who spent many afternoons at my home right here in East Palo Alto, and just talking about his passion and his heart for education for all students. I just want to pledge that I'm going to be involved with the Community College District even more so than I have been in the past. I have a little more free time on my hands. And I just want you to know that I sit on the advisory board at Kenyatta College, and I hope to continue there. But also, I want to advocate for other leaders here in East Palo Alto to get more involved in the Community College District. So I anticipate not walking into rooms or zones alone going forward in 2021. But I want to introduce more people to the fine work that you guys have committed to do for our students here in the San Mateo County area. All right, God bless you. Thank you for giving me time. And I want you to know that we got you down here in East Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. We're so pleased to know that you're one of our ambassadors out there. And of course, we will take you up on all of that as a strong supporter. Thanks again.
My pleasure.
All right, that concludes statements from the public. We're moving on to new business.
Go to chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and and so just not to respond to any of the comments to violate the Brown Act or anything I do, I would like to make a recommendation to the Chancellor. So while we can't respond, we can either direct the Chancellor to respond or make requests. And this is a request I'd like us to, just to continue work on our faculty and our staff to be responsive to their needs, but not limited to what we just heard tonight, but also being creative and and creating opportunities such as, you know, if there's opportunities for us to extend the vacation time or cashing out of vacation times to, just to be creative, obviously, our, we, our staff aren't going on vacations or anything anytime soon. But if there's ways that we can be creative and being more responsive to the needs of our faculty and staff, that we do so. And then secondly, you know, typically, when we have these reorgs or have new trustees, we give opportunities. We know that they may have family or relatives or friends in the audience, and we give opportunities for individuals to speak. So I was just gonna see if we could, if we can take this time to see if either of our new trustees had any comments. If, you know, if anyone was here on their behalf or their friends or families that they can make a comment and not have to wait until the end of the board meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that, trustee Goodman. Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that, Trustee Goodman. Is there anyone out there, Mr. Bailey?
No, I meant the trustees. If trustee Pimentel or Lisa had any comments or anything, then just to make sure that if they wanted to say something, that typically we have cake and, you know, photos. But in light of, you know, everything, but if you had any comments, I wanted to make sure we didn't leave that opportunity off the table.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Pimentel, did you have a thought?
No, I was just gonna say thank you, Maurice. I actually had my kids in the background too, but they didn't want to be on camera, so they were here supporting me. And my wife was on the Zoom shouting in, but I have nobody to talk. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Just your petri's.
Likewise, thank you for the opportunity. And I think we are all in COVID operating differently. So rolling up our sleeves when we can is probably the work of the day and we are going to be celebrating soon though.
Yes, we are. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor?
Trustee Goodman, thank you so much for mentioning that because I miss the organization meetings. We always have a nice little social, the coffee and the cookies. And so let's make this deal. We are going to be back at some point. And when we come back, let's have the real celebration. I think we ought to commit to that. We would love to meet the important people in your life. That's an opportunity for you to introduce the people that helped you and support you. So I will make that commitment to make sure we do this right and we're all able to be back in the same place at the same time.
Is that a motion?
Thank you. We look forward to that day. All right, if we're ready to move forward, then I'm going to news business. Would be item 2012-1A approval of personnel items. Can I have a motion, please, in a second for discussion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All right, moved and seconded. So we have a human racist director, David Few, available to answer any questions if there are any. Are there any members of the public that have any public comments on this item? Mr. Bailey?
I see none.
Okay, then any discussion from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Yes, there is a motion. Then we already did that part. All right, then we'll call for a vote if there's nothing further. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next item is 2012-2A. It's a ratification of a renewed collective bargaining agreement between the district and the CSEA and its Chapter Thirty-three. May I have a motion in a second again for discussion purposes?
So moved.
Thank you. All right, we have Chief of Staff Mitch Bailey and David Few available to answer any questions at this point. Are there any public comments at this time?
I see none.
All right, then it's open to the board at this point for discussion. And if there is none, then it was the pleasure of the board. We've already had a motion in a second. We're ready to call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? And then the motion carries. Next item is the approval of the consent agenda items, 2012-1CA, 2CA, and 3CA. And these are approval of curricular additions and deletions to the curriculum or appointment of Van Campbell to the district bond oversight committee and ratification of the September and October district warrants. Are we prepared to take these together under consent or do any members want to have any removed? All right.
A motion to accept the items as presented?
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, then that carries. At this point, we said we would bring item 2012-5C forward. And 2012-5C is an informational report. It's an update on the contract award process for the San Mateo Athletic Club. Chancellor Claire?
Thank you so much, President Nouris. And this isn't an information item, not an action item. I know that I've sent some communications to the board in terms of actions and progress that we've made since the last board meeting, I believe it was November eighteenth. There's probably the most critical piece is that we did engage separate legal counsel with a counsel that has a specialization in procurement, asked them to render some legal advice. That was one of the directions that we received from the board. I, and really, the reason why this is an information item is that we wanted to really message formally to the board, but more importantly to the public, because I know there's a lot of interest in this topic, what our recommended next steps are. I will tell you that I also, in the agenda setting process, met with the now-president Nouris in terms of talking about this item. And really, the consensus was that we have more time than frankly I thought we had on November eighteenth. And I apologize, I thought we actually had an absolute hard stop on December thirty-first. It turns out that there is written in that contract that was approved back in June a bit more time. We do have a hard stop in March and that takes some of the pressure off of all of us in terms of figuring out the best course of action as we move forward. My expectation would be to provide the board sort of mirror the options that our council has provided in terms of what actions the board would like to take on this item. The reason why we feel like it's probably best to defer it at this time is by next week, just like many businesses, we kind of come to a grinding halt. So we're really not losing time in terms of when we take this up with the board for specific action. Whatever your, whatever your decision is, will be your decision in January and we will implement that fully. But again, this was for us, it was just an opportunity to formally message to the board and the public where we are in the process with the expectation that the board take an appropriate action on January thirteenth when we reconvene. So I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions or.
Let me add to that, the chancellor, that because we have two new trustees that have just jumped on board and this is such an important item and because we have received the legal opinions, all of the board may wish to discuss the legal opinions with the attorneys who can do that either individually or in groups of two. So then all of the board members can be up to speed. The new trustees can also ask whatever questions they have of legal counsel and bring themselves up to speed. So when it's time for a decision, they will be prepared to make a meaningful and knowledgeable decision as well. That was an important concern to make sure everyone was on the same page. Any questions of the chancellor? All right, that was the report then.
Okay, well.
Yes, Mr. Halliburton.
Yeah, so first is public comment and then there's board discussion.
Fine, I didn't realize we had anyone on this. Is there anyone on this? Vice Chancellor Bailey?
I see no hands raised at this time. I see one, actually Frank E.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see any hands either on my side here. Okay, patch him through.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, Naterli, go right ahead.
Yeah, I don't know whether I want to comment at all because I, is there going to be any further disclosure of whatever the report is to the board members about what the options might be or what the legal exposure is?
Chancellor?
Yeah, it is an attorney-client privileged confidential memo, but I can tell you that the options will flow from the attorney's recommendations and it will be entirely up to the board in terms of what direction they wish to take. And there's multiple options that the attorneys have spelled out for us.
So I guess the question is, will the public have a chance to comment on the various options once they're, they're being proposed?
Yes, that would be our, I'm sorry, Frank. Yes, that would be our intent is to have that public discussion on January thirteenth, which is why we wanted to sunshine it here with this meeting so that you would have ample time. And of course, we invite the public to comment on the options when we bring it for decision before the board after the first of the year.
So prior to that January thirteenth meeting, we'll have some kind of indication of what that recommendation might be?
I'll continue to try to answer. Yes, certainly through, you know, we obviously publish our agenda and of course, the Brown Act and you'll have, I presume, some sort of memo that outlines the various actions. And it'll be published with the, all of the agenda material at that time.
Okay, in that case, I'll reserve my comments until that next meeting.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah.
Anyone else, Vice Chancellor Bailey?
None that I see at this time, Mr. President.
All right, I'll come back to the board then. Board discussion? Trustee Halliburton, yes?
So I'll start where I think this discussion needs to start. And that's why are we here with this item before us tonight? Now, at our last board meeting, and unfortunately, we do not have minutes. We haven't had minutes for quite a while, but I listened to the recording and it was quite clear that our direction at that time was to have staff poll the board to schedule a meeting in the immediate future. We talked about the following Monday, but as soon as possible before Thanksgiving and if not before immediately after, to continue the discussion, reach a decision on what direction we're going to go. And I am now informed by our attorney, who I spoke to, that unless our instructions to our staff are put in the form of a motion that is seconded and then voted on, any consensus we come to, it has no weight, there's no legal weight. Which is very troubling because that's not how we've operated for a couple of decades I've been on this board. I will note that when I listened to the transcript at two hours, eleven minutes and forty-five seconds into that, I stated that we need to agendize a special meeting as soon as possible to get public input. So there's no question this was going to be a public meeting, not a closed session, and then act on what direction we're going to go. Trustee Nouris, at two minutes, two hours, twelve minutes and thirty-seven seconds into the transcript, you said, "So we are going to carry this over to a special board meeting next Monday." Trustee Schwartz, at two hours, thirteen minutes and forty seconds, and said that staff will poll the board to set a time for this special public meeting. And Chancellor Claire then stated that we will poll the board for directions for a special meeting next week, that being the week before Thanksgiving. So that did occur in terms of polling the board in a meeting was scheduled, I believe, for December first, right after Thanksgiving. But that meeting never occurred. So I have a threshold issue that I'm troubled that when the board gives direction to staff to do something, that direction was not followed. That's a big problem for me. That's like the starting point for my concerns. We were subsequently informed that even though, because I think the board has been very clear over the course of more than six months, probably seven, eight, nine months now, that if we found ourselves in a bind, we would extend our contract with Exos for six months only, not to exceed six months, not to go one second past the start of the new year. If other trustees believed that that was not what we were doing, I'd be curious to hear from them. And that it was going to be over. Then when we didn't have the meeting we were, we instructed staff to have on December first and then it became this meeting, and I guess I'll back up and say, I and trustee Nouris both commented, "Let's make sure the current board, meaning the board that, whose term ended, gets this, to dispose of this, to deal with it." They've been immersed in this for years. When those directions were disregarded, then okay, here we are tonight to discuss this, but it is not an action item. So this board is not given any opportunity to give direction on this to our staff. And I believe that on midnight on December thirty-first, Exos's contract is over. I see no authority where the board has relinquished its authority and handed over to staff the discretion to extend a contract. In fact, we didn't even know that that option existed at the time that we were supposed to be scheduling a meeting. And in the notes that I received or the email I received, it was, "Well, we are going in a different direction." I don't know what that "we" is. To me, it's like staff has decided to go in a different direction, notwithstanding clear board direction. So I think our staff has put us into a very difficult bind because we can't even, it's not an action item, give direction to extend for three months. I believe we, there's no authority to do that. And at midnight on December thirty-first, Exos is gone. And I wish our staff had not put us into this bind. It's not how I think we should be operating.
Any other comments? Trustee Goodman?
Me, not much. I mean, I agree with trustee Halliburton on a lot of what he said. I guess my concern is, how do we move forward? Do we call a special board meeting within the coming days, not weeks, to address this with regards to potential legal exposure that was brought up, that we could possibly be sued or a lawsuit would ensue if we were to go with another entity? You know, and if we're going to, if we're even going to consider expanding the contract of the services past January one or December thirty-first, then I'd like to know why we can't request, you know, some type of waiver of any type of potential lawsuit by Exos, number one. Number two, you know, what is it going to take for us to get up to speed, including our new trustees, to be able to act on this, to dispose of this and with some urgency? You know, we need to act. We've had this item before us. Our two new trustees have been, has been present, have been, both been present over the last few months. It may not take much to get brought up to speed. And I do agree with trustee Halliburton and trustee Nouris when they did make those comments that we were going to have a special board meeting the Monday after that, that meeting, that never happened. I was not a party to extending it. So again, when trustee Halliburton says, "Who is this 'we'?" It was not me as a trustee and I'm assuming it wasn't him. And so, you know, we need to answer those questions because those are very real concerns. And this is an environment, or this is a situation that we created. And when I say we, I mean the leadership team, the board at the time, the leadership of the board at the time, as well as the administration. So we need to resolve this and we need to make sure that the public is given ample opportunity to participate in this process.
I would agree with all of that in the standpoint that, yes, we do have to make sure we have input. Yes, we do have to have the decision makers up to speed. And at that last meeting, there was a direction to go and start negotiating a contract with the other party. with the other party who we couldn't do. And this is a multimillion dollar contract. And I think we all realize that we cannot jump until we see where we're going to land. That means we needed to get legal opinions before we took any kind of action. And that is why we got attorneys that are well versed in this area to give us advice so we know exactly what we're doing before we take some kind of hasty action and then find ourselves really in a bad situation with more lawsuits, which we don't need any more lawsuits. So I find it difficult to understand why we want, why, why we can't take another week or two on something as important as this, to be able to get the public information in, to be able to have the trustees who are now on the board and who will have to make that decision, and to be able to get that legal advice so we do it right. I mean, we want everyone to be able to be a part of this thing. But then the, then I'm hearing that, well, we got to rush through it. We got to do it fast. We can't do it in two weeks. Nothing is going to change that much in two weeks that I'm aware of. And it just gives us more of an opportunity to make the right decision and have all the people that want to be heard, be heard. So I don't see it as, as a negative.
It's not a negative. All due respect, I, I do believe that our board leadership could have acted and we wouldn't be in the predicament that we're in now to feel that we have to rush. We're, we're being, we're reacting to our current reality. Had the situation arose where we could not have a board meeting on that, on the first, board leadership could have called a special board meeting. When trustee Petritas and Pimentel could have been sworn in, that, that week, they could have been sworn in a week or two ago, or about a week ago. And they could have been brought up to speed sooner. And so there's things that we could have done, we didn't. And I'm not saying, you know, it's a Monday, Monday morning quarterback at this time. But what I'm saying is we need to have a sense of urgency. You're saying, why not a week or two weeks? But, you know, Chancellor Claire is saying January, at the earliest, we're talking about weeks. And so all I'm saying is we need to have a sense of urgency to see how we can best move forward to ensure that, one, our public is a part of this process and our trustees are brought up to speed so that they can make an informed decision that best serves our district.
Trustee Petritas, yes?
Yeah, um, you know, I'd be lying if I didn't say that as I attended the last meeting as a concerned citizen, that I had hoped that you would all come to some resolve so that when we were sworn in, we wouldn't have to take this up. That being said, I, and I, I'm not speaking for John, but I, I'm guessing we're in agreement that we feel fully equipped and as up to speed as we could have been thus far to addressing this as soon as the break is over. We, it is true that we could not be sworn in until last Friday because of state, state laws. So we couldn't be sworn in two weeks ago. And there's also, I under, you know, there's protocol that we need to have legal briefings and we can't get those till we're sworn in, right? So tonight was the first time that those things, those options were even available to us. So, you know, this may just seem like fluff, but it's not when I say that I might, I myself am very much anticipating both the, the legal briefing that we'll be able to get now that we're sworn in, as well as actually coming to some resolve on this issue that is mystifying to me why the current board hasn't been able to resolve till now. But being that we are a team and that I am new to the team, I very much look forward to really bringing this forward and bringing it to, you know, us, you know, as quickly to a close as we can come in the new year. That being said, you know, one question I do have is it was my understanding, and, and Richard, I may be wrong, that it's not, there's a new contract for ninety days, but the existing contract somehow had an extension that could automatically come into play. And that's maybe a question for you, Chancellor Claire, about how that worked. And I, my understanding was we didn't know that that was the case last month when this, last meeting when this was happening. It was also my understanding that that meeting on December first couldn't come together because all of the board couldn't necessarily meet at that time. Maybe some of the board members who aren't here, who are no longer on the board. But I feel very confident in being able to help resolve this issue and getting the best that we can in terms of understanding the public who have also already been very involved and provided a lot of input. So I don't feel like there's a lot of new issues to understand. I do feel like we need to understand those options moving forward. And trustee Nurse, as you said, I certainly, especially as a new board member, we don't want to make hasty decisions without legal counsel at this point. As again, as an informed citizen, all I've seen is a couple of years of, you know, lawsuits in the newspaper. And that's not how I want to begin my tenure here.
Thank you. Board members? Chancellor? You're muted.
Sorry, I wanted to quickly try to answer trustee Petriti and Petritis and, but I also wanted to acknowledge the comments that were made both by trustee Holliver and trustee Goodman. And trustee Holliver, I appreciated the conversation we had earlier today. Trustee Goodman, you're right, you're, you know, here we are, and how do we, how do we move forward? So that's what I would like to do. With respect to the technical aspects of the contract, again, I do apologize. I was under the impression that it was a hard stop on December thirty-first. And frankly, that's why I pushed to have a special meeting because I knew that without some sort of resolution, we, we, we just had to have a resolution. I did find out later, and I suppose I needed to read the contract a little closer, but I did find out that there was a thirty-day option. I did have a subsequent discussion with the council working on this. And, and I recognize that while the intent and what we said was December thirty-first, you're right. But the contract technically that was approved by the board does give auction. So we don't, technically, we don't have to take action tonight to get us passed to summer thirty-first. However, if you want to make it December thirty-first hard stop, we can, we can enforce that piece in the contract. And I, I think that was all that I was going to answer. I, I just wanted to answer the technical aspect of the contract. I'll stop there.
Yes. Trustee Holliver?
So we're, we're in a bind. There's no action item for us to consider. And as far as I'm concerned, the board has not authorized staff to extend this contract behind, beyond December thirty-first. So that would be staff acting without board authorization on a matter that has been extremely controversial. And, you know, with the, with the background of the cancellation of a meeting that the board had on a consensus basis scheduled for right around December first, so that the board could work through and work its way to some decision. There was no decision. Let's be very clear. I had said, let's go ahead and start negotiating with the, the other qualified bidder. But that did not get the support of the board either. So there was no decision other than we got to bring the board back together immediately, as soon as we can schedule it, to hash it out and come to a decision. That didn't occur. There's no action item tonight. So I don't think we can give direction to staff regarding extending or not extending. So then we're in the bind where staff is making unilateral decision without board authority to extend a contract. I, I'll just say, you know, I, I, I believe on multiple occasions, I've heard trustee Goodman talk about, you know, the buck stops with us, or it's on us. It's, and I agree with that. It's on us. But part of it being on us is for us to do our proper job and govern it. And when that breaks down, then it's on us to figure out what caused that breakdown and, and make changes as, as necessary to stop that breakdown from happening. That's where I feel we are right now.
Yes, trustee Pimentel?
I guess the following up on Lisa's comment, I'm, I'm informed, I'm ready to act. Probably more importantly, I'm more interested in helping to govern an educational institution, not a gym. And I really don't want to talk about this issue anymore. And based on Richard's analysis, it's probably right that, that the contract expires on the thirty-first. And I know that our public who's paid for these swimming pools and gyms would like to have access to them, and I support that wholeheartedly. So I guess I'd recommend that we stop talking about this. We start talking about educational issues. The management can make arrangements to allow safe public access as of the first of January. And let's talk about how we can get more, more kids into our educational institution, moving on with their lives instead of talking about gyms.
Well, it would seem to me if we do have to make a decision before the thirty-first, and that would require a special meeting. Is that basically the consensus?
I'm, I'm happy to meet anytime, anywhere on any subject, whatever is adequate.
I agree. No, we don't need any extra meetings, but we are where we are right now, and we need to deal with the situation. And so is, is that basically what the board is thinking as well? So we can take care of this once and for all. I'll put that out there for comment.
Can I just get clarification again in, in Chancellor Claire, if it's you or somebody else? What exactly do the contract terms state about the extension of a ninety-day? Is that a grace period? Is that a new extension? What exactly are the terms there of the contract that has already been approved?
You know, I, I want to make sure I got this right. And I don't know if we have Yenelli Palito, who actually structured the contract. I know we have, you know, oh, you know, he's here. Okay, our experts here. I'm going to let you know and speak to that.
Yenelli, are you prepared to discuss this with us regarding the provisions of the contract?
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, so I'm I'm looking at the contract right now, and it did provide for a three months. Hold on a moment as I'm scrolling through the document. So the extension was to terminate on December thirty-first, twenty twenty, unless terminated or earlier. However, though, we added language in the event that additional time was required for the district to complete the RFP process or execute a subsequent agreement and to transition to a successor. The contractor would agreed to continue to provide services for a period not to exceed three months. So the amendment three was provided as, as part of our board report when it was brought forth to the board for review and approval.
So that sounds to me as if the contract extension is self-executing. If we ask them, if, if we, if we don't end it, then it can continue without a separate agreement. Is that, is that what it's saying?
That's correct.
I don't, that's not how I interpret it. I interpret it totally different. That is something that would be mutually agreed upon. You know, pending either some type of need to continue with the RFP process. One, which we don't. Number two, if we need to transition to another entity. Or three, I, I forget what you mentioned, but there, there were three options that would, that could trigger it. It wasn't, I don't believe the wording is will. It may, and so I'm not sure it's self-executing. And I'm, I'm not sure we lose type of authority to, you know, cancel it on the thirty-first or not.
I guess.
Can we hear that again? Can you read that to us again, please?
Yes, so the three options were for the district to complete the RFP process or execute a subsequent agreement and transition to a successor. So it's, so it's three options to complete the RFP process.
We would need the whole contract to have the context, I think. And so if you could, are you able to share your screen so we could see that entire area? Because you, you can't just cherry pick the three options without having the full context of the legal wording.
Could I hear the last bit of what you were saying? I'm sorry, I, I missed that. It was I, I agree, I understand.
So I'll read it, I'll read it again.
Yeah, thank you.
The extension of term. The term of agreement is extended for a period of six months, beginning on July first, twenty twenty, and ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty, unless terminated earlier as provided in the agreement. In the event that additional time is required by the district to complete the RFP process, execute a subsequent agreement and transition to a successor, the contractor agrees to continue to provide services to the district for a period not to exceed three months.
So does that mean that they're agreeing to provide services for three months without being under contract?
That means that the contractor is agreeing to provide the services if we haven't completed the RFP process, which we haven't in this case. Because we had, we, we went into the phase of negotiating and executing a subsequent agreement. But, you know, that's the, the basis of our discussion, of the discussion tonight.
So the terms of any extension, if it were for ninety days, would probably be the same terms and conditions in the contract, I would think. It's not going to be, you know, anything new. They just extend the terms and conditions for that period until the other, the other parts are met.
Yes, so it would be an extension of this existing contract.
Right, but was that, that was added on our behalf. And so I don't see that being something that would benefit the other entity. And so I'm thinking that we still retain the authority there and the benefit and the leverage. And so it says, unless required by the district. So unless triggered by the district, we retain that. So if the board says, hey, this is it, that's it. So that's how I interpret it. But I mean, we're obviously free to get, you know, another legal opinion on that.
Yes, and I believe that that's been, this, this agreement had, or the amendment has been reviewed by our current legal counsel for the RFP matter.
I'm sorry, can I ask a clarifying question? But the amendment has not been approved by the board at any time, has it?
Yes, it was approved on the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty meeting.
Thank you.
So as I, if I may, I, 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 I think it's a, maybe a bit of a fine point. But, all right, so we were all first informed about this language within the last two weeks, I guess. But it's still a matter of, is that what we want to do? And because there's no item on the agenda for us to act on, we can't really act on it tonight. Otherwise, what is occurring here is that staff is on its own volition without direction from the board deciding to extend a contract. And I guess I would simply say, I think that's inappropriate.
Well, I'm just wondering, the board actually was aware of all of this because in June, we actually took the matter up, considered it, and then we voted on it and approved it. Unless I'm missing somewhere along the line.
We did.
Yeah, so that was what? Five months ago?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So that was part of what we anticipated because we thought maybe we would have a situation like this. And so I'm looking at it as if this thing rolls over because we're still haven't finished the RFP process, which is what we want to do. And we would like to hear from the public. And we would like to hear from our lawyers to make sure that the decision that we make does not expose us to liability and lawsuits and the like. And therefore, that's why I'm saying we need to look at it carefully and not rush into it. Because haste in this case may make some serious waste. And so if the board thinks that we need to make this decision within the next two weeks before the thirty-first, then our only option would be to schedule a special meeting with this item on it. And we'll take the item up, and then we'll make the decision before the thirty-first, if that's the board's pleasure. I don't know what other options there are. I'm open to hearing other suggestions, of course. I guess, trustee Goodman?
You know, I, I think if, if we are going to extend past the December deadline, I would do so and be okay with doing so as long as. I would do so and be okay with doing so as long as Exos is willing to stipulate that they are not going to sue the district. Because if that's still out there, then it's almost like there's, that's, you know, we're being, you know, brought to the negotiating table with the gun to our head. You know, so either they say, hey, in good faith, we're going to negotiate, and let the chips fall where they may, but not have an ace in the hole that, hey, you know what, we'll sue you if you don't come down on our side. And so I think if they want to be a partner, they have been a partner for the district for a period of time. And if they want to continue that, there should be some goodwill. And so if that is taken off the table, I would be willing to move forward. If not, then I think we need to have a special board meeting within the next week, days or the next week, so that we can resolve this matter. And then I would take the whole concern over the deadline out of question, and then hopefully start to move forward. You know, with either the existing partner or a new partner.
All right, that makes sense. Yes, Chancellor Claire.
Oh, well, I wasn't going to speak, but I just want to, so we avoid the confusion. I want to make sure that what I heard was correct. So, Trustee Goodman, I'm just going to repeat back what I think I heard. That, and I know you're speaking for yourself, but you're sort of putting an idea out there that you would be okay moving past the deadline using sort of that, that language in the contract, because the RFP process isn't really complete. So technically, we could extend so long. But the direction would be to speak with Exos and get an agreement that they're not, you know, basically that they would not sue. And, you know, I think there's a couple of options that would prevent that from happening anyway. But I think that's what I heard, and if they couldn't come to that agreement to move immediately to a special board meeting within the next week, so you could make a decision before the thirty first. I want to make sure I got it right.
That's the pleasure of the board. Because I think ultimately right now, just like John said, you know, let's, let's resolve this. Time on this, this issue.
Well, it would seem to me what you're saying also, Trustee Goodman, is that if they're willing to sit down at the table and then negotiate in good faith, to negotiate a contract, then why would they want to then hold this thing that we will sue you, practicing in good faith? We don't need to have this over our head. If they're willing to put that aside and say, hey, we'll sit at the table with you, we'll cut the best deal we can. If we can't cut a deal, then we have no deal. I think that's what you're saying.
Well, yes and no. Yes, obviously, we want the best deal. But we also want the board to have the autonomy to be able to make that decision.
Oh, of course.
If the board says we want to go in a different direction, so be it. But it shouldn't be, hey, if the board chooses to go with another company, then, you know, we're going to sue you.
But are we going to, are we going to sit down and try and negotiate a contract with them in good faith? I think that was first part of what you were saying.
I mean, obviously, we've done our part. I think anytime we've sat at the table, I mean, I wasn't there, but I'm sure our administration was, and our reps were there in good faith.
Yes, I agree.
As we move forward, we need to make sure that the voice of the entire board is being heard. I think it was very clear at the last board meeting that the majority of the board at the time said that there should be some communication with, I think it was power wellness. And that didn't happen for whatever reason, you know, but if that was, you know, the direction that was given, so be it. As we move forward, the entire board should be heard. As we move forward, Exo should not be putting any type of external pressure on our administration or the board to act in a certain manner.
But I do want to interject a bit, that the other piece, and a very important piece, is we are also directed to seek counsel. And so it has to be a sequential thing, and we would have, we could not actually continue a discussion with power wellness.
Yeah, and I, I mean, if that's where we were, and it became the case, there were so many days, whether it was after the time when our two new trustees could have been sworn in, or the time when our former trustees could have been, you know, could have acted, and we had a special board meeting. We, you know, that's on us, and that's it. We accept it, and we need to move forward and try to resolve this.
All right, anyone else want to chime in on this? Or do we feel that we've given administration sufficient direction at this point as to how we would like to move forward on this?
I don't know what direction we've given them. Here's what I've heard. Trustee Goodman, I think, is making a very important point. And that is to, I guess, I'm not sure, I mean, you got to help me out here, have some discussion with Exos to get a waiver from them of whatever the proper term is to not bring a lawsuit against us regardless of the outcome in order for them to get a three-month extension. That's what I'm hearing. I'm not, what I'm not, what maybe others are hearing is, you know, even though we only had two votes back in November to proceed with Exos, that without agendizing this for action through some kind of like instruction to staff, we're now instructing staff to go ahead and cut a year deal? Is that what others are hearing? Because that's not at all what I, I think we are talking about here. I think we're talking about whether or not we're going to go with a three-month extension period. And the conditions, the strings attached to that are that they sign some ironclad, you know, legal documents saying, under no circumstances, regardless of who ends up managing this institution next year, they're not, they're not suing us. That's what I think we're talking about.
Exactly.
Did I get that right?
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Petridis.
Counted, you can still, I can still be a newbie tonight, but those two things seem orthogonal to me. Is there anything in the contract currently that says they can sue us or not? Like, I don't understand how that's even part of a negotiation of saying we're going to give you this if you don't do that. They really seem like different issues to me.
Yeah, so the reason I brought it up was because it was brought up at our last meeting. It was kind of thrown out there that, oh, then the lawsuit will come. And that's when the board was trying to basically exert our own authority to act as a board and either choose to go and accept the recommendation of administration or to go in a different direction. It was thrown out there kind of haphazardly that, hey, then the lawsuit will come. And so that's where I'm coming from. And you and I both know that you can sue for anything, you know. So, I mean, they can do it, whether it's upheld, or whether they, I mean, whether we spend a thousand dollars trying to fight it, or a couple hundred thousand. And so I think that's what the concern is.
Which is why the district needed to seek legal counsel to understand what the options were, which is what I understand we're in the middle of, and I know that I'm getting a briefing about that this week now that I'm sworn in, right? So that's what we're talking about, right? I just want to be clear.
Yes.
And my understanding, and I don't have the minutes memorized as Richard does, but is that the issue of the lawsuit came up when the issue was brought up of can we give it to this lower bidder who wasn't as qualified? And would Exos then use that to say that we did not take, we did not go through the process and, and take the highest scored bid? That's the issue very specifically. So that's about, that was about whether we went with this number two. Right? Because there's other, and I don't, again, I guess this is a discussion item, even though it was supposed to be an information report. There's other options, right? There's a new RFP process. There's, I mean, there's, there's other options still, right?
That is correct. And so I guess what we're saying is if the chancellor cannot have, get an acquiescence from Exo, Exos, to, to agree to that term, which is to not sue us in exchange for an additional three months, then if that is not gathered, then we will set a special meeting within the very near future, and the matter will come up for a determination. Is that where we're at? A head nod will be fine from everyone if that's where we're at. I'd like to make sure we're all on the same page here, so we don't appear confused at some point in the future. I want to make sure everyone is on board here. Trustee Oliver, are you with us on that? Are you good with that?
I believe we need the board to act on a three-month extension.
So what you're saying, we need.
If that conversation is successful, and we have a document in writing, you know, that they've agreed to sign, then we can authorize the three-month extension.
And I think that's what Trustee Goodman has said. Is that correct, Trustee Goodman?
Yeah, I think what the missing part is, is, you know, we have a potential close session date in our, in our future, and possibly add this item to that. And I think that's what's missing. Between now and the thirty first, we have a special board meeting to, either to affirm the extension or at the very least to address it.
All right. Is there consensus? Is there consensus among the board? Hearing no opposition then, or lack of consensus, I will infer that we have consensus. It's the only way I can judge it, and so.
Just add one additional item, which is the takeaway I got from my conversation with our attorney today is what we're doing right now is actually, has no, it's nothing. Because we're not taking a vote. There isn't a motion, there isn't, and there isn't a vote. And he said consensus, that's nothing. It doesn't exist.
No, it's not illegal. We are not taking any legal action that will bind us. We're simply giving the administration some direction to see what actions we may be able to take, and then.
I was, I was told today that we do not give staff direction, period, except when there's a motion, a second, and it's put to a vote. Consensus doesn't, it's like it didn't happen. What we're talking about.
So then we won't give consensus or direction, and hopefully staff was listening and can determine for themselves what they believe the board might be thinking. Because we're not directing them or taking a consensus. We're simply having a discussion, and hopefully they're intelligent enough to figure out what they think we want them to do. Think our lawyers would go with that? All right.
All right. We got it. Thank you.
Are we good with this? Let's move on. All right. Next item is other recommendations. And this is the, this is twenty twelve, one oh one B, setting a board of trustee meeting dates for twenty twenty one. We typically meet on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. And there was a proposed recommendation of dates. Can I have a motion in a second, please, to discuss this item?
So moved.
Thank you. I'll move in a second. Thank you. All right, the dates were provided to us, and those are the recommendations. Does anyone have any questions? Is there any public comment on the dates? Vice Chancellor Bailey?
There are no public comments.
Board discussion on this matter, is there any? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, so those will be the dates for our meetings. So we move to twenty twelve, one oh two B, which is approval of contract award for Skyline College Building nineteen swing space project. So again, can I have a motion in a second for discussion purposes? Thank you. All right, we have Vice Chancellor Nunez and Chris Strugger-Frisch available to answer any questions. Again, any public comments, Vice Chancellor Bailey?
Not this time.
Thank you. All right, so this is open to the board. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chancellor Nunez, could you explain any of the process that assured representation and equity in this process?
So again, this, this project was put out as a hard bid project via our pre-qualified list. Any contractors that are on that pre-qualified list, the twenty twenty pre-qualified list are the only ones that are subject to a bid on this particular project. In terms of, you know, affirmative action and our outreach, it was just sent out to the folks that through last year's process, you know, submitted their applications. And if you recall, in January of this year, actually, you know, I gave a presentation, these are the pre-qualified bidders that are moving forward. At that time, you asked that in future references, please ensure that your outreach is done. For the twenty twenty one pre-qualification list that's coming to you for approval, the business meeting in January, you'll have a whole list of outreach that was done to a myriad of individual firms, Chinese, African-American, LGBTQ, women-owned, veterans, and a host of others. And that all was done, quite frankly, by Yanelli Palito and her team.
Thank you so much. I want to make sure that, you know, we continue to not just, you know, see the firms, but make sure that we understand what goes into presenting them before us as we move forward. Again, thank you, Yanelli, as well.
Any other questions for Vice Chancellor Nunez? All right, then, thank you very much, Jose. If there is anything further, if we're ready to vote on it, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, the matter, the motion has carried. So we move on to twenty twelve, one oh three B, which is approval of our response to the civil grand jury's report relating to ransomware. And may I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Chief of Staff Bailey is available to answer any questions. The items have been provided in your packet. Any public comment at this point? Vice Chancellor Bailey?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Board discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, then that is approved as well. Twenty twelve, one oh four B, approval of contract award for digital marketing services for community continuing and corporate education. Again, please give me a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have Jonathan Bissel here, who is available to answer any questions. I'm assuming that there are no public comments. Mr. Bailey?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion by the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Then the motion has also carried. Moving to twenty twelve, one oh five B, approval of updates to district policy six point one eight credit by examination. Again, a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Thank you. And I have a second. And we have Vice Chancellor Aaron McBean available to discuss this and answer any questions. No public comment, Mr. Bailey?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. Board discussion, questions? All right, yes, Trustee Oliver.
Yeah, I would just ask if Vice Chancellor McBean can go through this quickly and explain why we're doing this.
Sure, we have it too, Trustee Oliver. So the Board of Governors, Title V Regulation Addressing Credit for Prior Learning. Previously, we only had a policy for credit by examination. This comprehensive new Title V Regulation spells out credit for prior learning, not just for credit by examination, but also for, in particular, for the use of joint service transcripts for student veterans, but not limited to that. Also expands it to include evaluation of industry-held certifications and other demonstrations of previous learning. And so what's included in your board policy basically replaces the previous Title V language with the new adopted Title V language that spells out all those different areas. Um, that spells out all those different areas that we can now, that are now are expected to evaluate for credit for prior learning. Um, and the big focus really, um, has been, um, on, uh, making this available for our student veterans. And so that's where, where we will turn our efforts next is to make sure that we have the administrative procedures and the process too. So that in particular veterans can access this, this program using their joint service transcripts.
Great. I have a question.
Yes, Coria.
Do you have a sense of, uh, how many or what percentage of students actually make use of. Before the credit by examination? And then I'm curious for what you might expect that change to be. I understand it's the title five language. But I'm just curious from your perspective, what you're anticipating and what the use has been.
Yeah, um, uh, when we have looked at it, we have looked at it a couple of years, um, but it's, it's not very widely used at all. Part of it is just, um, uh, where credit by examination has been available, but it also just hasn't been, uh. Something that many students have pursued, maybe in the, you know, dozen or handful, uh, in any given academic year. Um, I expect that this will see dramatic expansion in that. Um, to be, uh, purposeful in this, um, one of the issues that we're dealing with is the CSU system has not indicated that they will be accepting. Uh, credit for prior learning for either general education or major prep courses. Um, however, uh, we do have local degrees as well as, um, certificates that will definitely, um, be eligible for this. And, uh, our work will be to, to automate this process and make it as seamless as possible, in particular for veterans who. Have their joint service transcripts and then have the option of having the credit applied or not. That has to be in the process. Uh, but I think it'll be very attractive to all of our student veterans who've, uh, waited a long time to have their. Learning that they did in their service recognized when they, when they come to the community college system, which is where most of them return. Um, for their education. So, uh, I expect the expansion will start probably earnest in the, you know, fall twenty twenty one. Um, but I bet we'll have, you know, hundreds of students will want to take advantage of it probably every year.
Is this at all related to sort of the move towards competency based learning? Like, is there? Some pieces of this that are going to be leveraged for that? Or will this benefit from that in some way?
Um, it, the CBE, the competency based education, uh, really is a, a separate effort, uh, from credit for prior learning. Um, uh, and there is a work group, uh, actually in the Bay region where they've put out an RFA for establishing some, uh, uh, a CB, CBE lead. Um, and so we'll have, uh, one of our districts in the Bay region who will probably be successful in that, uh, RFA. And, um, we expect to also develop those processes. Uh, but it is, it is a separate process for the credit by, or, uh, the, uh. Uh, competency based education from the credit for prior learning.
I would love to see, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly how I, how I do this, uh, President Nurse, but I would love to kind of hear back from this in some way. Because it seems like this is a really great opportunity to leverage similar efforts. Um, not that they're the same, but that they, as we think about sort of transforming teaching and learning, these are some of the pieces that I think that we really need to begin. To look at, uh, and if there's something that we, that, that's why I was curious how much it had been used in the past, if there's. Any kind of a study we can do and see how those have been done and, and, and if there is a group that could be working, I don't know if any of these groups intersect already. If there are people who are working on, on this level, who are part of that competency based education group or committee that you said. But I would love to, you know, know that there's some, there is some communication there and to hear back on that at some time.
Right.
I think those, uh, those are very good points, assuming they're not directives or consensus. Dr. McBean, did you hear where we're coming from? You could follow up with some more information appropriately to, uh, share, share. Your thoughts on this and, and give us more so we can, uh, continue to move forward in that area.
Uh, absolutely. Always look forward to, to bringing forward this kind of information for the board. And so as we get the processes ramped up in spring for the, the credit for prior learning, um, I'm sure it'll be a, a logical point in time. But I'd love to bring back some information to the board.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, uh, or comments on this item by the board? All right, hearing none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Then that carries as well, which brings us to another, uh, item, which is twenty twelve, one oh six B. And it's the adoption of resolution number twenty dash twenty honoring trustee Karen Schwartz. May I have a motion in a second, uh, on the resolution?
I'd like to move that.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any public comment, uh, Mr. Bailey?
There is not at this time.
Well, I, I guess this is on for board discussion, whether or not we should have a resolution for Karen. I don't know if she really deserves it or not. I think she doesn't deserve a resolution to, she deserves so much more. She deserves so much more. And, uh, a, a resolution is something that we put together and it's a piece of paper, but you know what? It, it's not the document itself, the spirit in which it is given. And, uh, if Karen were out there and if she heard us, I, I would like her to know that her contribution to this district. It was, was immeasurable, uh, what she did during her tenure here and. Before in other school districts has made a mark on education in this county. And it was a, a great privilege for me to serve with her. And, um, those were my thoughts and I wish her the very best. Anyone else? Yes.
I, I would like to say as a, you know, as a newcomer to the board, um, you know, throughout my, uh, campaign. Karen was so phenomenally available for advice, guidance, mentorship. Uh, on, uh, she having run many campaigns herself. And I see that as such a selfless act that she did because it wasn't like she was going to be on the board here with me. You know, she was leaving and still willing to do that to, for a newcomer. So I was so appreciative of that and just want to say that for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Um, if there is any further discussion, uh, I will, uh, ask for a vote. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, the resolution is carried. Uh, this next, uh, resolution is twenty twenty one honoring trustee Dave Mandelcurran. And, uh, number twenty twenty one is the, the hundredth year of the district, I believe as well. So very appropriate. Um, do I have a motion in a second to discuss the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Everything I said about Karen, I replicate it all for Dave. Uh, because I, I, I hold him in such high regard as well. Um, we all know what he did for this district and for this county. And what I expect he will continue to do because it's his passion. It, it's something that he truly believes in. And, um, I, I enjoyed working with him and wish him the best as well. Yes, this.
Yeah, well, uh, I, I think, um, we are, um. You know, it, it, it is what it is. We, we, we have district elections and, and, uh, you know, trustee Goodman prevailed. And I congratulate you on your reelection, uh, trustee Goodman. Um, we, we did lose a very, very important voice with, uh. Uh, trustee Mandelcurran's, uh, departing the, the board. Uh, and he was extremely devoted to this district. Um, participating in all kinds of activities, you know, reporting to us at board meetings on the many activities he was involved in. And I think really played a very significant role in keeping our eyes as best. Possibly focused on what our job as trustees is. And that is to be the voice of the people. Uh, to, to, to walk the tight rope that I believe is part of leadership. In any kind of leadership, but in this case between reporting. Uh, our, our staff. And at the same time, maintaining a, a distance that allowed us to be objectively evaluating. Um, and, um, analyzing where changes are needed and being, you know, forthright about pointing out the things that. Need to change. Um, I'll do my best to continue in that tradition. Um, and, um, you know, I just, uh, want to salute trustee Mandelcurran's. Work over many years to remind us on various occasions. That that's really what our, our job is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there aren't any other, um, uh, comments or discussion, I will move, uh, I will, uh, ask for a vote on the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is carried. So that takes us to the next section, which is informational reports. The first one is twenty twelve, three C, and it's an update regarding our, our COVID response and, and plans for summer. Uh, term twenty twenty one. Um, let me recognize the chancellor to report on that, please.
Thank you so much, President Nurse. And, um, I echo the comments that you made about, uh, our two former trustees. I, I do believe, uh, former trustee, uh, Schwartz is on the Zoom meeting. So I'm, I know that I'm sure she appreciated, uh, hearing. Nice things. And I think trustee Mandelcurran, as near as I can tell, is in Hawaii. I don't think he's tuned into this meeting. But, um, anyway, uh, you know, I mentioned in one of my weekly updates that it, it's just hard to get through these meetings without talking about COVID nineteen. And, uh, really, uh, that this is a, really meant to be more of a discussion with you as board members and kind of an open discussion. I'm kind of in the same spirit as, uh, the discussion with, we had about talked a little bit earlier. Uh, the reality is, as I've mentioned in, uh, a weekly chancellor's update, is that, uh, we have to plan for the, uh, summer. And the fall sessions. And actually, we start planning for those now and we'll be planning for those in terms of our scheduling. In earnest, right after the first of the year. So. I will be coming back or we will be coming back to the board with, uh, requests for some direction, uh, blue and red about our summer session. As well as our fall. Very difficult to do. Um, none of us can really predict, obviously. Uh, you know, what, what that might look like. We certainly hope that we can. That, you know, that we move out, out of the purple tier, that, uh, things become less restrictive. Uh, obviously, I think I read or heard that the first does, the, the first shipment of vaccines has hit California already. Um, and so, you know, we can only hope that things will get better. Uh, but we do need to have some conversation about these two sessions. And I believe we've made the right calls all the way through. I, I, I. Tell people we're purple proof, which means that we've come up with a, a response that allows us to move from one tier to another. As we get less restrictive, our plan is always to open more things up. Uh, and as it gets. As things get more restrictive, we have to kind of shut down. I guess that's what everybody's doing. My hope, and this is just me thinking out loud, and certainly I'll come back and, you know, our EOC meets, uh, every week and, uh. Really, uh, a huge part of their job is to plan, uh, but my hope is that we can think of summer session. I'm hoping as sort of that transition session that in the best of all worlds, hopefully we can use summer, uh, as. I, I think we'll be, still have a, a number of classes online, but hopefully we'll be able to open up, open up more services. And use that session as a transition to hopefully a more fully occupied fall semester. I can't predict the future and I know I'm not asking the board to do that either. Uh, I have also, uh, directed our EOC to develop detailed plans about the eventual. Reoccupation of our campuses, uh, or repopulation of our campuses. And, uh, they will probably have that for you after the first of the year. So I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, uh, but I wanted to put this sort of in front of you now to get you thinking about, thinking of this, to get us collectively thinking about it. I'm so glad to see, uh, uh, academic senate president Wallace, you know, right here, because I feel like we've worked. Under very difficult circumstances very well together. And I, I know that, um, you know, we, this academic planning we do. Is done with the senate. Uh, so I'm really kind of open to your, your comments, your suggestions. But please understand that it's likely that in early January, that very first meeting, I will probably come to you with, um, some recommendations. Uh, at least regarding summer, but potentially fall. And I, I do have some ideas. I'm happy to discuss with you.
Any questions or comments from the boards on this report? Okay, thank you, Chancellor. Let's move on to the next item, twenty twelve, four C. And this is discussion of district policy and advocacy priorities for twenty twenty one. Uh, let me call up my chief of, uh, staff, Michelle Bailey, introduce this report.
Good evening, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Uh, and allow me to take a moment of personal privilege to congratulate, uh, trustee Goodman's reelection. Uh, and to welcome, uh, trustee Patrizes and trustee Pimentel to the board. Uh, we look forward to working with all of you. Um, and carrying out a number of important initiatives and some of them I'd like to talk to you about tonight. Uh, the board has provided great direction to staff, uh, over my tenure here. Uh, about priority areas, uh, which you want us to focus on when it comes to advocacy. Uh, and legislative activities at the local, state and federal levels. Uh, trustee Oliver brought up tonight, an earlier topic when you were discussing the issue around DACA. Uh, and about the issues we wanted to support relating to the district's, uh, commitment to our undocumented students. And that has proven out well with our, uh, with our work and implementing a number of policy, um, directives. Uh, but also in advocating with our federal legislative delegation, uh, on a number of issues, uh, in support of those students. So tonight, what I have for your consideration and would like your, your feedback and discussion about. Uh, our three recommended areas that the district focus on as relates to its advocacy and, uh, and state policy agenda for twenty twenty one. Uh, and it's, it's constructed in the context of, we know that we're working in a very unusual, uh, political, uh, and social environment right now. Uh, with the pandemic, um, you know, at its, hopefully at its, its peak and not getting any worse. Um, but then noting that the state, uh, is focusing lots of its effort, energy and resources in responding to that activity. Um, you know, some of the other activities that we normally pursue in a legislative session. Uh, we probably, uh, don't want to do at this point in time, um, as they are focused on those items. Uh, and resources are limited. We know that we want to make sure that we are not, um, that we're sensitive to those issues. Uh, and that we're attuned to, to the work that they're doing. So with that, um, you know, the, the, the district staff offers the following, uh, recommendations for your consideration. One, and it's an item that the board has given direction on the past, but we want to reaffirm is the protection of the district's basic aid status. Uh, this is essential, uh, to our financial health and stability, uh, for the short and long terms. Uh, we have been a basic aid status for a number of years now, uh, and moving out of that status would take a little while. Should that happen, but it would be detrimental to the district and our ability to be able to offer, uh, a number of the great resources and supports. Uh, that we have been able to implement over the last several years. Uh, and I will just mention, the chancellor's mentioned this, uh, on prior occasions. Um, they're finally, uh, around the state, uh, has been a coalition developed of basic aid districts. Um, who are now aligned in its advocacy approach, uh, for issues that are unique to our, um, to our operating environment. Uh, and so we continue to work with that coalition, uh, and will continue to be supportive of those efforts, but really want to, to make sure that the board continues. To, to, to support this direction for us. Um, the second item, um, we have for you is, um, you know. The use of our fund one, a general fund, um, primarily, primarily unrestricted dollars. Um, for, um, greater flexibility, um, relating to student basic needs, uh, those issues that you have directed staff. Uh, to implement over the last several years on food and housing and transportation and, you know, mental health services and the, and the like. Um, you know, we, we, we ran into some stumbling blocks, you know, we do have, uh, resources at our disposal. Um, but we don't always have the flexibility to use those dollars for those particular items. Um, and earlier this year, um, the state granted authority, um, uh, for districts to use lottery fund, uh, proceeds that are allocated to districts. For those basic aid items. And so we'd like some, some greater flexibility, uh, in our, our general fund dollars to be able to use it for similar kinds of activities. Uh, and the third, you know, uh, recognizing, uh, the, um, the uncertain economic environment at the state, uh, level with the state budget. Uh, number one, we'll rec, we'll, uh, look forward to seeing the governor's budget proposals in the coming weeks. Uh, we know that there have been recent reports of a windfall of one-time monies, uh, that can be expected so that may have stayed off some of the. Uh, impending cuts that were to be expected, uh, but completely not sure yet. And then with the federal, uh, uh, change, um, at the executive level in Washington. the approach to, you know, any additional stimulus, stimulus or COVID relief packages, which the state had counted on for some of its work earlier, that may change as well. But with all of that as context, you know, we really want to take the approach of, you know, we understand where cuts are needed and particularly on the categorical side, which the district is susceptible to, because we have a number of programs that are funded exclusively or almost exclusively through categorical funds, including our strong workforce programs and others. And should, you know, those, should cuts happen in those programs, we wouldn't want those cuts to be disproportionately applied to districts, meaning that we wouldn't want basic aid districts like ourselves to get a larger cut than other districts. We understand if we all have to take a haircut, but we don't want to take a disproportionate one. And so we recognize that, you know, there are a number of other things that the district will want to support throughout the course of this legislative session and also at the local and federal levels throughout the coming year. But we think that, you know, a tailored agenda at this point in time is prudent. And it's not to say that we wouldn't be supportive of other items. But as we continue to focus on efforts, we would offer these for the immediate consideration at this point in time and would welcome your feedback on those. So that's the end of my report and would be certainly happy to entertain the board any conversation or questions that you may have on any of these items and to take additional direction that you may have for us.
All right, open to board members at this time. Yes, trustee Goodman.
I have a few questions and just maybe just not aware of the process in the past. But one of the questions is, you know, why do we need a board action to state the obvious? Number one. Number two, you know, what does this authorize? And who will this action affect? And is there any cost associated with this action?
All great questions, trustee Goodman. And I would say, yes, if this is sort of restating to a degree the obvious. You know, the purpose for staff bringing us forward to the board is to make sure that we were in panica on the, the direction that, that the district is taking that relates to its, its outreach and advocacy efforts. So we wanted to make sure that everyone is, you know, to use metaphors, you know, rolling in the same direction here. And so they're all on the same page with those activities. So, you know, with that, you know, while no action is, is necessary at this point in time, it is not uncommon for districts to publicly, you know, outline their advocacy or policy priorities for the year. So it's keeping inconsistency with that. I don't know in the past, at least not in my couple of short years here, that we've done that formally. But the board has been very clear with staff on those policy priorities and we've been working to implement those. This just sort of, you know, puts those in a little basket at this point in time and allows us to work from those and to, to direct our focus on those.
So does it authorize lobbying on our behalf of staff or allocating any of their time to lobby on behalf of the district? Who specifically does, are we really directing? And like I said, is there any additional cost that is associated to this?
So we have, you know, the district's had a lobbyist that we worked with. And, you know, we will, we will use the, these priorities, you know, to direct the work of, of our lobbyists. And there'll also be work that the staff supports at appropriate times. And then certainly, we'd want to engage the board in those activities when those opportunities arise as well.
I might add that as part of the base, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Oliver, I did your hand up.
No, go ahead. I have a question, but go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I would add that as part of the basic aid coalition, there, there's discussion there of, you know, can we pull our resources and hire someone to make sure that our interests are protected? So there's another, there is a, you know, it's not going to be a huge amount of money, but there's another place where resources would go to pursue this.
Sorry. And to that point, that's what the purpose of my question is. I want to make sure that we're not blanketly approving actions that would typically come back individually to the board. And then, you know, so that's, is that what's going on? Like, what's the purpose of this action versus having items come back before the board or present that information that, hey, we're pulling our, some of our resources to go with this consortium? Or, hey, we're going to have some, we're going to allocate X person, individuals' time to be able to go up to Sacramento and lobby on our behalf? Because these items that are here, I mean, it's, that's not just what we support, but what our legislators support of us here in San Mateo County, knowing that we're a basic aid district. And so are we tacitly approving this? And then there's really a blanket approval to, you know, have access to any funds or direct staff to do things that we normally would be made aware of?
I don't think that's the case. And certainly wasn't the intent of staff, trustee Goodman. The intent of bringing this to the board's attention was to allow us to, to put a fine point on the focus of our immediate efforts. You know, so as this legislative session ramps up and we continue our outreach efforts with our local legislative delegation, that we're able to focus on a couple of key items. We want to make sure that the board is supportive of those items, which we hoped you were, based upon prior conversations. So it's not really a surprise that any of these things have come, have come forward. But again, it allows us, it gives us, you know, that confidence to go to the legislators and say, you know, our board is supportive of these items. The district as a whole will continue to be supportive of these items. And so, you know, as there are opportunities in the future for us to bring specific items back related to these items or, you know, something else that may come up in a one-off kind of approach. And we certainly will continue to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, trustee Petritis.
A couple of questions and comments. So I, I love the idea that you're also pooling your resources and working with other districts or colleges around these issues. That seems like a really good use of resources in terms of advocacy and lobbying. Is there a set line item for, for this kind of work every year? Or is it as things come up, then you decide to, to do that? I'm just curious. I think this is important work. I'm just wondering how, how that is sort of determined? And if there are years when, for some reason, we would want to be doing more advocacy work than others?
So in my short time here, this is the first time we've brought, I think, something this formal to the board for its consideration. I think we brought it in pieces over time. So in a package, I think this is probably in my four years here. It's the, the first time we've done that. I'll defer to the chancellor or certainly to Kathy Blackwood, who may have been more involved at certain other times through her association with our chief business officers, statewide association as well on those efforts. So I'll defer to the chancellor or to Kathy Blackwood.
Sure, I have a couple of comments. I wanted to say that this isn't so much a thing about money or how we're going to spend it. But we have people on staff like vice chancellor Nunez or CFO Slater, who sit on statewide boards. And when given direction like this from the board can then push that board and say, okay, chief business officials, when you're lobbying the department of finance or you're working with the state chancellor's office, make sure that you bring up the issue of basic aid or community-supported districts being treated fairly. We have had times when the department of finance has come to our facilities and said, well, you know, you're community-supported, you've got lots of money, why don't you have 75% match? And the state only bring in 25% when the standard is 50/50. And we want to say, no, we're like everybody else. You need to treat us the same as everybody else. And, you know, so, so these are the kinds of things that if you give staff direction, we're already there. We're already in those situations and we need to know what the board's priorities are to say this is something that's important to our board.
Thank you. Can I, I have one add-on question there, which is just on the second point about the greater flexibility and the use of the general fund dollars. I would love, and I don't know if this is the time to do it, or this is, I at least want to kind of put a, you know, parking lot this, is that in those food, transportation, housing, the issue of education materials and content. As you know, textbooks are one of the biggest expenses for community college students. And the state of California has been very active, including the senate, the faculty senate, around the use of open educational resources. And there are some groups who I know that are, are trying to, you know, in these advocacy efforts, put materials and, you know, course materials into this, into these parentheses as well. And I certainly would love at another time to talk more about the use of open educational resources and, and some of the zero textbook degree programs that are offered through the state. But I think that they, these are around this, around the advocating for greater flexibility in the use of these funds.
Exactly. All right. Well, yes, trustee Oliver and then trustee Pimentel.
So first, I, I, I'm fine with these three items. I think we should agendize this because, for action. Because based on my conversation today, consensus direction is of no, has no weight. And frankly, I really have a problem with that legal advice. I'll just say that. Maybe we need to get a new lawyer to give us advice on whether or not we can operate on a consensus basis. But in any event, based on my conversation today, I think we need to agendize this for action. I did have a couple of questions. You say we have a lobbyist. Who is that lobbyist?
We've used Nate Soloff from Nassau and Sacramento.
Well, the last direction I recall giving was to, when we hired Jim Gross with Nielsen Merkheimer. So I'd like to agendize that item at some future point in terms of who, who is the right person to use, the right firm, the right person. And then piggybacking on trustee Goodman's comments, questions, I do think his questions are right to the point, which is, this is just sort of a general vague area that we want to make sure we're not asleep at the switch. To me, that's far different than, you know, authorizing specific actions. And I think there's been a little lack of consistency in the past on whether it is board prerogative to determine positions that we take on legislation. We do that. We do take positions on legislation. They're scheduled, they're agendized, we get public comment, we take positions. Until then, every once in a while, we learn we've been busy lobbying some item that never came before us. So I think, again, for purposes of consistency, that we should agendize, so there's clarity, that it does require board approval to take positions. And, you know, then if we do more than a position and expend funds to expend funds.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this particular, yes, oh, yes, I'm sorry, trustee Pimentel.
No worries. Thank you. Just per all the previous comments, I think it, it would be wise if management were to take the time to simply put together, maybe it doesn't rise to the level of a, of a informational meeting, but a memo or something that describes the process that we use to come to these conclusions. And the budget that we have, including the part-time staff that might be used in lobbying. And as, as Richard points out, the, the actual tactics of the strategy, who we hire and how we get done what we done. That said, I have one comment that I'd like to add to the list, if the board is willing. I'm very focused on what I've referred to in the past as tuition-free community college or tuition-free SMCCD. When I raised that in the past, I was told that there, it was against state statute. I asked the district to look into that and show me where in state statute we can't offer tuition-free education. And they pointed out in a memo section, 76300 of the education code is actually quite specific, that all community college districts shall charge tuition. So I would like to add a change to that statute specifically. It may be part of item two on your list, Mitch, but I would like to make sure that we get specifically to that point. There was another item that came in the, in the information that was provided by the district that there could be some gray area around whether giving tuition or other general funds type substance would be, sources would be a gift to public funds. And I'd like to also make sure that we specifically address that. So if we're going to sponsor legislation, I've spoken with a few legislators who'd love to be part of the tuition-free SMCCD movement. And I'm happy to help coordinate the district's efforts in that regard. But I would, I would like, on our new non-consensus consensus approach, to make sure that everyone's comfortable adding that concept to Mitch's point number two, that we actually change, seek to change that definition or give to districts the flexibility to, at the district level, decide whether or not to charge tuition.
All right, chancellor.
Yeah, no, this is a great conversation. And, you know, the other element of all of this, as we try to wind legislation through, is also recognize the impact of the state chancellor's office. And so part of the coordination here, you know, of course, we're our own district. We're, you know, governed by our own board. We can do whatever we want. But we also really like to try to work, particularly on big pieces, in concert with state chancellor's office. Because, you know, if they say no, and it just kind of comes from nowhere, it's hard to get legislation moved through. So that's another dimension to our work. It's just to make sure that we're in concert as much as we can. And if they say no and we say yes, that's just the way it is. We're our own district. But we, we do try to work within the context of chancellor's office as well. Otherwise, sometimes it's really hard to move things through.
All right. Is there anything further on this matter? Thank you for your report.
Oh, yes. Again, I think we should agendize this as an action item, including trustee Pimentel's suggested addition to the list.
All right. And I think really what we were asking for is that, is some kind of a memo that explains the entire process. Because as, as Mr. Bailey has indicated, this is the first time it's come to the board in this type of a format. So I've never seen it like this before either. And so I'd like to know a little bit more about the process, where it's coming from, the limits of it, and to discuss it further as well. And so we will bring that back.
I think trustee Oliver's point is also well-taken, that before anybody speaks on behalf of the district, we should act on it as a board, formally, not just, not the memo on process and budget and tactics, but also if we're going to take a position, let's do it officially.
Sure. And I think today's discussion was intended to put it out there to get a first impression from the board. So the administration could see where we would like to go on this. And then, you know, decide whether or not they should pursue it or not. So I think that is the next logical step. So we're all good on that? All right. Then we will move on. The next item is 2012 6C, discussion of potential updates to board policies on minutes. Chancellor Claire.
Thank you so much, President Neris. And I know I've written about this a couple of times in some weekly updates. But we, you know, first of all, I want to acknowledge we are way behind in our minutes and it's unacceptable. And we need to fix it. There's no question. Basically, the plan at this point, and when I have this discussion, because I think what's going to happen is we're, again, going to come back with some suggestions in January and probably a change in policy. I'll put the, I'm not going to go for the policy in any kind of detail, but I kind of want to hear from the board a little bit. But right now, our plan in terms of taking care of the problem we have right now is to make sure that our written minutes before they were recorded via video are in fact caught up. And for our, our, the board members that have been with us for, you know, prior to this change, those, those minutes have been quite detailed. And we, you know, we want to make sure that we capture the essence of the conversation. What we'd like to do, however, is when we go, when we went to the video format, which was right after the shelter in place, we'd like to do is, is really kind of come up with some models for you to look at where the minutes are much more streamlined. And there was a conversation, there's been a couple of conversations over the years about, first of all, broadcasting meetings. And the idea would be if we were able to bring, this was the conversation. If we were able to broadcast, might we actually get to a more compressed, condensed set of minutes? Certainly in accordance with the law, but I think that would really take a lot of, a lot off the shoulders of staff. The idea also would be to, you know, use the modern technology so they're actually referencing the. The idea also would be to, you know, use the modern technology so they're actually referencing the spots in the video. So if someone's interested in a particular item, in the minutes, you can click right on a video, we should be able to do that, just like any other entity. And I also recognize that we need to improve the, the, basically the delivery system of our video. So I'm really, what I'm advocating for, and I think, you know, I think we can all agree is a really kind of a complete overhaul of our process. Number one, catch up with the minutes we're supposed to be caught up on. I recognize that that'll be a priority. But number two, with this new technology, and I think there's probably pretty clear direction from the board before we even went into shelter in place, it was direction from the board to begin broadcasting or live streaming. And we will have our, we will actually have our boardroom set up for that. We've already done some of the initial work. But what will happen is I think it's also going to take some changes in board policy. I'm going to go quick share screen. I don't know if you all can see the, you see the board policy at this point for policy 1.5? Is it okay? Okay. And I, what we're going to need to do is, is basically go through this policy and we're going to suggest some updates just to, just to modernize it. But again, the, I think the big takeaway is can we streamline the minutes? Certainly in accordance with the law. Pair that with a good video system. Then ultimately what I'd like to do, and I've said this a few times, is actually look for a comprehensive platform. There's, there's a couple of vendors out there that, you know, we can look at. Certainly, community colleges aren't a particular platform and eventually move to a platform that really streamlines the business that you have to do as board members. So I'll stop there. But I wanted to acknowledge that we do need to get caught up on our minutes. We have a plan to do that. You'll start seeing some changes right after the first of the year. So I'll stop there for comments, questions. And I'll, I can take this off the screen. I don't want to.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from board members? Yes, trustee Goodman.
Just to, you know, due respect, it just seems like, like we're in Groundhog Day. We've, we've had this discussion. I believe Domon presented a resource for us to explore that could actually allow us to go directly, if we're looking at a video directly to the item to search, video search. We also talked about the minutes. We actually hired two individuals to do the job that we had one individual doing. And, and, and so I think my concern is that if we, even if we move forward with redoing the minutes or trying to revamp how we collect the minutes, it would be from that point on, and we're still behind A-ball right now with regards to approving our minutes. And so we need to have a plan of action to get us up to date. And I think that's the concern, you know, whether it's utilizing the position that the board already approved, filling that position or whomever chose to take those added responsibilities when we did not hire a replacement that we hold them accountable and make sure that those minutes get taken care of. But at this point, you know, it's, it's our public that's losing out here when it comes to minutes being months and months behind. You know, not to mention board members that are having to look and wade through videos just for, to support issues. And so I think we need to have a little bit more sense of urgency. I appreciate the fact that we are moving forward and that here we are, you know, having this conversation, but we have to do more and hopefully, you know, this board, either it's a matter of agendizing action at, at a subsequent meeting, but really moving forward, what was already brought before us. I mean, the resolution, I mean, the solutions are, have already been brought before us. Let's just, just act on them. If, if it's the board holding it up, then we need to act.
Well, I guess what I agree and then the action plan again is to get caught up with the stuff we have to write, but to really use a compressed means of taking the minutes, you know, really more of a modern form. And I think that's what I need to hear from the board this evening is can we move away with the video? And if it's indexed properly, can we now move away from the traditional way we've taken minutes to a more streamlined version of them. It's actually kind of conforms to what the board policy is. The board, the board policy is streamlines it for us. So I'm in, I'm in agreement with you, trustee Goodman. And, you know, that right now we need to come to the meeting on January 13th with minutes to approve. I'm not saying we're going to be able to get completely caught up, but we definitely need to get caught up. There's no question. And you will have minutes to approve at that January 13th meeting, as many as we can possibly squeeze in between now and, and over the break.
Can we deliver some deadlines?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just a follow-up.
Yes.
My apologies. Can we set deadlines for, for action on, on some of these, whether it's the bringing to the board, the, the different options that was brought to the board already regarding, you know, the video and, and the archiving of such video. I mean, we have already, we have different departments within our district that are able to have these Zoom conferences, events where they actually brought that simultaneously, whether it's on YouTube or on Facebook, we should be able to do the same.
So I think that would be something the chancellor can go back to with staff, assess their ability to do it. And then give us a hard and fast timeline that you feel will work and then we'll be able to hold everyone to it.
I'm going to put Mitch a little bit on the spot. Mitch, did you have a sense of how far we would be able to get for the January 13th meeting, just as a first bite at this?
Certainly. Our, our goal is to have the, the minutes that you referred to earlier, chancellor, relating to the pre-video already for the board's approval at that meeting and then a, hopefully a draft set of what the minutes might look like with modifications. So the board can take a look and see if that's, that's their preferred method as well. And then if that is the case, then we can use as a prototype for the remainder of the minutes for those meetings that have been videoed since March.
Is that acceptable to board members? Trustee Halliburton.
So, well, first, I don't, I don't know if any members of the public that want to comment on this, but the last time this issue came up, which was a long, long time ago, there was quite an interest on, on the part of the, the public. So I don't know, did we ask for a public comment? Just question of the chair.
No, we did not. I don't recall asking for any public comment on this because we just had the report. And so the board kind of jumped in on this.
Yes, no, no, no problem. So I just think that's something we, we should do. See if there's any public comment. And I have a, a couple of thoughts. First, what was put on the screen briefly? I don't know what that was. The, was that the board, what is that?
Yeah, that's board policy. I think it's board policy. Yes, it's board policy 1.50, which is the minutes of meetings. It was last updated in June of 2015. So I believe we're going to need to update it to make it a little bit more modern. And we would likely come back with recommended changes for the board to consider at our next meeting in January.
Fair enough. And that'll give me another trustees an opportunity to, to review this. And, you know, I can't review it while it's flashed on the screen. But, so just so I understand, what you're suggesting is that we deal with the minutes that were before we went to Zoom conference for action on January, whatever, the middle of January. Okay. Well, I mean, I think if, you know, if you hired a really good quality temp, they could plow through the entire, we're like 11 months out of date here. And, and in a month or less, they could plow through each and every one and, and produce minutes. So I, I do think there's great urgency around getting this brought current. And I also believe, I don't know if it's in the policy, but I think we need a policy that says, you know, there's X number of days, weeks, months. Not months, in my opinion. By which date the, the minutes are going to be prepared for the board action, you know? Sure, there can always be some extraordinary circumstance where we can waive it, but we don't have that. I think that's lacking as well.
All right. I think those are all points well taken. I, yes, trustee Petri this.
Just two quick things, you know, this, this isn't, this is an ancillary to the board minutes, but on Zoom now, you know, you can do real-time captioning. And that actually provides you a great, you know, a great, a great start. They don't get it exactly right. I mean, they, AI doesn't get it exactly right, but it's a good start. That's, that's one thing. The other, and you could do that on our next meeting, for example, just to even try it out and see how that works. The other thing is this is kind of basic, but on the, on the board packet, it wouldn't be too hard to create those as sections and have it be a table of contents with page numbers that you can click back and forth on each page. I mean, those, those are just some simple things we could do right, right away. And even, and again, page numbers on these would be very helpful when you do have a transcript and you want to line up and say, what was 10CB or whatever. So just some quick, quick fixes to try to see how that works.
Okay. Any other board members want? Yes, trustee Pimentel.
Yeah. I, I appreciate this discussion. This kind of good hygiene in a public agency is very basic. And I mean, this is, this is small town USA 101. We should not have a problem like this with a $500 million a year organization that we can't find somebody to type up our minutes. So whether it's a technological solution or a resource solution, I would say it's untenable that we're this far behind. And Mike, I appreciate that we have a plan, but what, again, you know, I think trustee Goodman was, was driving at this. A plan is a list of things to do, a set of dates, a resource requirement against it, a responsible party and a date certain when it's going to be done. So if, if it's, again, okay in our non-consensus consensus, at our next meeting, I'd like to see the plan as to how we get our minutes organized and how we get our website functional and how we actually behave in a transparent way to the public that gives us hundreds of millions of dollars a year to manage. It, it's really quite unacceptable that we can't even find basic information on our website as a member of the public. So I guess I'd say instead of, I mean, literally, this was an issue a year ago at one of the, one of the early board meetings. And the staff came back with a recommendation to wire the conference room with $100,000 worth of gear. I wrote a letter to the board saying, that's baloney. I'll go down to the, to the home, to the, not the Home Depot, but the Best Buy and buy the gear for a thousand bucks on me. And I'll bet, I'll videotape the, the thing and live stream it on, on Facebook. This is not that hard. So I'm not going to make more of an issue out of it than it needs to be, but I think we need to revisit that board policy. I think we should not have public meetings that are not audio and video recorded. And we should not wait more than, than a week to have those minutes out for review by the public. And a website very soon that actually includes functional data on the performance of our district that we can stand by and be held accountable to. Thanks.
All right.
I feel pretty passionate about this issue, Mr. President. Yeah, thank you for letting me talk.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you for your comments. Are we good on this? We have a hand raised on this. Vice Chancellor Bailey, is that correct?
We have one public comment from Monica Melamut.
All right. I have a three-minute comment.
Yes, I would like to second, third, fourth, that idea of broadcasting meetings. I spoke earlier in the meeting today, and since then I've done some grocery shopping. I delivered food to someone who cannot do her own grocery shopping. There's a lot that we can do nowadays. And I'm just, you know, telling you exactly that I did that because, you know, we're all busy and we're multitasking. And I do remember meetings where faculty were in attendance. And after, you know, when they got up to leave after a certain point in the meeting, they were publicly embarrassed for leaving the meeting. You heard some of our faculty today how they're juggling their family life and their work life. And we're all under time constraints. And so anything that can be done so that we can actually participate and be more involved would be very welcome. As for the recording of the meetings, as a professor myself, I have to send lots of emails. And I have been using voice to text on my cell phone. The technology is all over the place nowadays, you know, to capture spoken voice in written format. So it's just a matter of, you know, having the will to do this because I don't think in the year 2020, this should be an issue. It's, it's just a simple thing to do and it's just a matter of deciding to do it. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much for your thoughts. All right. Is there anything further on this? All right, then we will move on to the next item, which is, let's see, 2012 seven C district financial summary. No, we skipped that one. That's the one that came off and we'll come back at another date. So we are at communications at this point. We have statements from board members, if there are any. Do any board members have something they would like to share at this point? All right. Then we go to the next item, which is a, a meeting of the Sematell County Community College District Financing Corporation. And the Sematell County Community College District Financing Corporation is the entity that borrows money for the district and issues our bonds and our COPs. They meet annually, this board, as required by state corporate law. They also meet when the district issues bonds. And in, in absence of the board president, who was president towards, the meeting will be conducted at this point by, I, I guess by, let's see, is Chancellor Claire going to be doing this?
I believe so, yes. So I will call the meeting to order. I wish I had a gavel, but it's my virtual gavel. And now I'll ask Mitch Bailey for a roll call.
Trustee Nouris.
Here.
Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Trustee Halliburton.
Here.
Vice President Claire.
Here.
Trustee Manuel Kern. Trustee Swartz. Treasurer Slater.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Bailey, I presume we have a quorum with all those missing people? Is that correct?
You do.
Okay. So now I'll ask for a motion in a second for the approval of the minutes of the December 9, 2019 meeting.
So move.
So, okay.
Hey, are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote. Those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Now we move on to naming officers for 2021. And the financing, per the financing corporation bylaws, the officers of the board of the corporation will be the president of the board of trustees, in this case, pres- president Nouris. As chancellor, I'll remain as vice president. The secretary, the board of trustees as vice president clerk will be trustee Halliburton. The treasurer will be chief financial officer, Bernard Slater. And then I, I guess at this point, we're asking for additional board members or is it the remaining board? I suppose that serves also as directors, is that correct? I suppose that serves also as directors, is that correct?
Yes, the remaining board.
Okay.
So we need to identify them by name.
Okay, so the remaining board members will be trustee Pimental, trustee Petri's and trustee Goodman. And what I'd like to do now is call for a motion in a second to approve the slate of officers and directors of the financing corporation.
Move approval.
Second.
I, okay. And now I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, motion carries unanimously. Now I'll call for a motion in a second to adjourn the financing corporation meeting. I have a vote.
Mike, before before you adjourn, as we're in this new format, may I please request a copy of the financing corporation's bylaws in financial history? Do we have? Is it ongoing? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So that, so we can get that to you, trustee Pimental, so you have some background. Mitch, you'll be able to help us with that, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I will call for a motion in a second to adjourn the financing corporation meeting.
So move.
Second.
Okay, and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I, motion carries and the meeting has adjourned at 10:06 PM. And with that, I'll turn the board meeting back over to President Neerus, thank you.
All right, thank you for that, that detail that we need to do every year. So at this particular point, we've reconvened our meeting. We are back in our regular format. I I'm going to announce that we are going to be going to close session at this point to continue consideration of items that are on our printed agenda. Our next meeting will be January 13th, 2021. So with that, I would return this to closed session at this point. And we'll go back to the same the same Zoom link that we had before.
Okay.
This portion of the meeting stands adjourned.